6:05 PM. Pastor David Manila, are you here?
I haven't seen him.
He's not here?
No.
Okay. I'm going to ask Mr. Mohammed Awadala to do the invocation today, please. And we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Balboa today. Okay?
Good evening. Please bow your heads. Dear God, ask good day to please direct our city council to make great and wise choices and to direct our city to always be protected and also to protect the people in the Middle East, the conflict that's been going on for, sorry, 19, 20 days. It's just been very horrible and the privilege that we have over here that we don't deal with what they're dealing with. And I pray that we all stay safe in God's name.
Amen.
Please stand up. Raise our flag. Raise your right hand over your heart and we give the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
And we also want to acknowledge our veterans who are here in the audience. Let's give them a big round of applause. For their sacrifices and their efforts that they've, that we've been able to celebrate these freedoms that we have in this country. Just a moment. Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Manning. Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Reyes English. Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Our first item tonight is a presentation from Senator Bradford's office. Is he here?
He's here.
Welcome, Senator Bradford, to the City of Hawthorne. Thank you for your regular legislative updates that you always do for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and it's truly an honor to be here. And as stated, this has been a practice of mine for the last 13 years since I've represented you both in the Assembly and now in the Senate. And I provide a legislative update as we culminate our year. As many might be aware, our legislative year is from January to September. We ended on September 14th. And then the governor has 30 days to sign all the measures that are on his desk. So that was completed on October 14th. So I'm just here to kind of like recap, recap the year, a very productive year for the state of California despite being in a deficit. We passed an over $300 billion budget despite having over a $30 billion deficit this year, the first deficit that we've carried in over seven years. But we're working our way through it. I also want to just commend this council. As a former elected official, local elected official, I know the challenges that you face every day and it's where, really where the rubber meets the road on a regular basis when constituent services really get addressed. We help direct the funds, but it's that you, the council, who really deliver the end product that, you know, residents really appreciate. So it's a collaboration and I appreciate the opportunity that we've had to work together over the number of years. And also commend you as an advocacy and, you know, initiative in supporting the unhoused, which are tiny home projects here in the communities and for implementing one of the few cities in the South Bay that have a pro-cannabis position. So I commend you for that. California's faced many challenges over the last year, including severe damage from climate-driven storms and a tougher budget picture than we have seen in recent years. And I'm honored again to serve as your senator and work with my colleagues in the legislature to make sure we protect the progress that we have made over the last 10 to 15 years since I've been there, making sure that we have strong initiatives dealing with homelessness, our infrastructure, our climate housing, and continue our efforts to ensure every community in California can be safe and prosperous. And thanks to more than a decade of responsive budgeting, as I was speaking of, the legislative colleagues and I were able to produce a state budget that protected the progress of the middle class, included higher levels of reserves and maintained critical programs that millions of Californians depend on on a daily basis. And we enacted groundbreaking gun control, gun reform here in California, protecting communities from these sinless and violent tragedies. As we all know, the nation, not only California, the nation, we lead the world in gun violence, the world, not just one country or another. We lead the world in sinless gun violence. So it's about time we do something about it. And we protected historic infrastructure investments from transit and it provided new financing and funding for flexibility of our public transportation system, working on many other lines around this South Bay area. We've enshrined strong consumer protections in California by cracking down on hidden fees and price gouging across various industries. And we took major steps with the unhoused and moving them off the street and housing them and working with individuals like Mayor Bass in Los Angeles with creative programs again. So just real quick, I introduced a number of bills this year, 10 of which made it to the governor's desk, eight of which were signed. If I was playing baseball, I'd be batting 800, 800, but hey, it's legislation. I always want to do 100%. Real quick, a bill that many of you might have all heard about, SB 673, the Ebony Alert, which now creates a new, thank you, alert to help us bring home black kids and women from the age of 12 to 25. Despite making only 12% of the population, young black kids make up 38% of individuals who come up missing and where you very rarely see an Amber Alert or any other kind of notification. So this will be specific to young folks from the age of 12 to 25 that might have some kind of mental disability, physical disability, suspected of being sex trafficked or kidnapped or are left under suspicious circumstances. So Ebony Alert's been signed. SB 661, student athletes. As many might know, I did NIL three years ago, Name, Image and Likeness for College Athletes. And we've seen many of them make tons of money, but we want to make sure that they know what to do with that money. So this bill provides financial literacy to all college athletes in Division One and Division Two to make sure that they know how to invest their money. Because I recently ran into a young man who just signed NIL deal and he walked up to me and the first thing he wanted to do is show me his Rolex. And I said, that's not what it's about. So we want to make sure that they have money once they leave college and invest it wisely and do the right things with it. SB 700, employment discrimination. Prior to this piece of legislation, you could ask someone about previous cannabis use and you can disqualify them for employment. That will no longer be the case in January. You can no longer ask that question in employment interview. So it leads to more employment for any individuals who so badly need unemployment, I mean, need employment here in this state. SB 392, the Tide House exemption bill for the Intuit Dome. It now allows you to sell alcohol at the new arena that will open next year. Here in California, in order for any sports venue to sell alcohol, you need a Tide House exemption. We did it for both SoFi and we just got it signed two weeks ago by the governor for, by the Intuit Dome. And last but not least, SB 384 for barbering and cosmetology. Prior to this legislation, an individual could have a minor violation in their shop and lose their license, not have it suspended, lose their license. This provides for remedial education to make sure that individual stay gainfully employed just because they might have had a violation with sanitizing their equipment or cleaning their area in a proper way. They shouldn't lose their license to practice their specific trade. Doctors don't lose their license, or lawyers after one violation. Cosmetologists and barbers shouldn't do it either. And finally, just budget, we were able to secure $10 billion for the district and $3 million for a radio program that works with youth throughout the South Bay, Accelerated Radio, no, $2 billion, I'm sorry, I mean, $2 million for Accelerated Radio and $1.2 million for New Day Foundation that provides tutoring and education for underprivileged individuals in underserved communities and $500,000 for, at the Dymley Institute at Cal State Domingos Hills. I will stop there. Also just make you aware that on November 21st at El Camino College, we'll have our annual turkey giveaway that many of you have participated in. And on December 9th, we'll have our toy giveaway at Martin Luther King Hospital. So I will stop there and if you have any questions, it'll be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, Senator, for that awesome presentation.
Thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause first.
To the chair.
Senator, I just wanted to ask you about the extending the inter-district permit appeals?
Oh, yeah.
Can you talk about that one, please?
Yeah, well, it allows more time to transfer schools. I didn't have it down here, but yes, we, the governor did sign that, inter-district transfers. That was supported by LA County Education, LACO. And so it allows kids who, for whatever reason, needs to transfer, makes that process a lot easier for young folks.
Thank you.
No problem.
To the chair. Senator Bradford, thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation. You're always a champion for Hawthorne and we appreciate you greatly. More importantly, I just implemented a request to the city manager and city attorney to implement a legislative component to our agenda. We've never done that in the past. It's always been individually made here with regards to requests for letters, et cetera. I think as a legislative body, where we're passing legislation and/or not based off of what that legislation is, I think it's important to just be connected with your office and similar to State Assembly's office so that we could coordinate policy and legislation and understand it a little bit more so that we could then give support again and/or not. However, it's important, I believe, just to be connected. So if your staff or anybody, your legislative team wants to send something over to us and provide something to us that we might not know of, that would be great to do that so that we could put it on our agenda and have an open discussion.
I have no problem with that. I appreciate that. That's the kind of collaboration we need. Like I say, we can't do it on the state level alone. Again, where the rubber meets the road is on a local level, so we do have to coordinate.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Senator Bradford, for coming back here. Again, thank you for always being in the district because everywhere I go, you're there. So, you know, from San Pedro to Inglewood.
Are you following me or am I following you?
No, but it's good to see that, you know, you always care about District 35, so coming to the community every weekend and be there showing up your support. So I appreciate that. And I saw you at the Wilmington, you know, day by day, pray, union parade weekend. So thank you for that. And thank you for all these bills because, you know, some of these bills are going to save lives and improve lives. So I appreciate very much, you know, your leadership and you have done outstanding too for this community. So my head goes off to you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I missed one thing. SB 51, that extends provisional license for women-owned, minority-owned, and disabled veterans who want to enter the cannabis space. It was due to expire in June. We were able to get an extension for a number, for seven more years because we all know it takes sometimes as much as two and a half years to stand up one of these businesses and thousands of dollars. So this will allow them to continue to operate until they get their permanent local and state license. So the provisional license has been extended.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Senator.
So now we have a...
Vaughn, do you have an extra pen for the mayor?
So now we have a very special guest, Los Angeles County Assessor Jeff Prang, the Honorable Jeff Prang, who's going to give us an update from his office with regards to what's going on. He's a, he's the big tax guy here, so.
Sort of, sort of.
Isn't that like, are you akin to that character in The Robin Hood? No, 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 no.
I am not the tax guy.
Okay.
The guy who collects your taxes has a very intuitive title. He's called the tax collector. I do something different.
I always give you a hard time about it. I'm sorry.
Everybody does, but thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making me feel so welcome with that little tease. It's actually a real privilege to follow Senator Bradford, my good friend, who is one of the truly outstanding legislators we have in California. You're very fortunate to have him. Mr. Mayor, Council, it's a pleasure to be with you again. I want to thank Councilmember Montero for reaching out and urging me to be here today. As a former council member and mayor of the city of West Hollywood, I know how busy you are, so I will try the best I can do to be brief. I'm going to start by saying there's two messages I want to leave for the community to keep in mind I'm going to talk about. One is I'm going to save you some money and I'm going to help you protect your home. But let me get started. So as LA County Assessor, just a little bit of background because people are confused about my job, I'm not the guy who collects taxes. I'm a real estate appraiser. I tell you what your property is worth. I'm one of three countywide officials, the other two, everybody knows the other two. That's the sheriff and the DA. I'm kind of the forgotten one. But I run the largest local property assessment agency in the United States. I'm responsible for establishing the value for about 2.5 million real property parcels and business assessments annually. And for the city of Hawthorne, there are about 13,096 parcels located within the city. My primary role is the production of what we call the annual assessment role, which is essentially the inventory of all...
You want to click through so that could change? I think on your end, there's the arrow, probably changes it.
That's, that's too confusing for me.
If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Okay, thank you, sir.
It's, I'll, I've got this great presentation. I'll just, I'll lose myself if I have to control that device. But as I say, the primary job that we do is the production of the assessment role, which is essentially the inventory of all taxable property in the county. And it serves a number of critical functions. Obviously, the first thing, it's the basis for property taxes. Secondly, it serves as an important tool for local government. It helps indicate, give you some indication about how to prepare your budget in anticipation of property tax revenue. It also serves as an important barometer as to the health of the local real estate market. Revenues generated from our assessments provide key funding for vital local services. This is why it's important to you. Property taxes are one of the primary sources of revenue for schools, municipal services such as parks, libraries, roads, and public safety. I always tell anybody who will listen that in many ways, my office is the most important local government office because if I don't do my job thoroughly and completely, money is left on the table. You don't have enough money to allocate to your, to your services. So the, as I mentioned, the assessment role is our primary function. And we closed the 2023 assessment role back in June and it reflected growth, again, for the 13th consecutive year. The total assessment role grew by $111 billion, which is about 6% over 2022. And that means the assessed value of all property in LA County is now about $2 trillion. That's with a T. And that generates about $24 billion in property taxes for the county, for cities, for school districts, and special districts. You know, in the old days, the assessor was compensated by a percentage of the assessment role. And I thought maybe one, I thought 1% might be fair. But Hawthorne's contribution to the assessment role for 2023 includes 5,100 single-family residential parcels, 1,300 apartment complexes, 638 commercial and industrial properties with a total assessed value of $10 billion. That's a 7.6% growth from the year prior and a 64.7% increase since 2015, which I think is a real strong indication of some of the economic development work that's being done here in the city. Some other data that might pique your interest, the local housing market. The, in, in LA County, the median sales price kind of reflects the reaction to rising interest rates and to some of the impacts that we experienced during COVID. In Hawthorne, the median sales price of a single-family home, not including condominiums, is $815,000. The countywide average is $890,000 and you're very competitive with some of the cities in the areas around, around you for median sales price. That is a slight decrease from last year. And it's not that home values are going down, it's that the home values are so overheated during COVID. There's a bit of a market correction. The values are still higher than they were pre-COVID, but they have come down a little bit. Now, one thing, as I get toward the end of my presentation, I want to talk now about some of the things I can do to help save you money. Well, I'm not the guy who collects your taxes. I do manage programs to help you save money on your property taxes. There's programs for seniors, for veterans, for the disabled, for religious institutions, and for nonprofits. But for anybody who owns a home and lives in it, you qualify for something called the homeowner's exemption. And the homeowner's exemption allows me to lower your assessed value by $7,000, which will save you $70 on your property tax annually. You only need to apply once, it rolls over and renews automatically year after year. In Hawthorne, about one-third of qualified homeowners do not apply for the homeowner's exemption. And the primary reason they don't is because they've never heard of it. So hopefully today and hopefully working with the city, we can get those probably several thousand homeowners to apply, particularly seniors and those on fixed incomes to save, save some money. All these savings last year amounted to about $724 million for people countywide. The other thing I want to talk about is one of my main, main goals since standing in office as assessor has been the modernization of our office. We've made tremendous progress internally to update our technology platform to streamline how we work. And today, I'm excited to talk about a new program we call our e-service account for property owners. Property owners have the ability to create an e-service account on my website so they can enroll in a couple of new programs that'll help them interact with this more easily. The first one is what we call e-notification alert. This is a program in collaboration with the Registrar/Recorder County Clerk and the Department of Consumer Affairs. This will help protect you if somebody's attempting to commit fraud against your property. You've probably heard the commercials that people are finding that somebody recorded something against their property. It can be very complicated and costly to fix. One of the challenges is anytime something's recorded against your property, such as a lien, a grant deed, a deed of trust, it takes about 30 to 45 days for you to get a letter from the registrar saying that that activity has taken place. If somebody's attempting to commit fraud, that's too long. We now allow property owners to record their email address, to go online and give us your email address. And if somebody attempts to record something against your property, you'll be notified within 48 hours. And if it is fraud, you'll have opportunity to, to respond. And additionally, the e-file service now allows, allows property owners to do things like change your mailing address and eliminates us having to use the need for physical paper forms, gets into the system right away and we'll be adding more, more services to that over time. So that concludes my remarks. I did want to let, you know, we also send out a very informative monthly newsletter you can subscribe to on our website for anybody who owns property. I encourage you to, to sign up to get helpful tips about owning property. But I appreciate your time and attention and inviting me back to, to visit with you this evening and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. Let's give a big round of applause first for being here, taking, taking time out of his busy schedule to visit us. I remember there's like about how many cities, like about 50 some plus?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight even, gosh.
Hawthorne is the most important one, though.
Right. All right.
To the chair. Mr. Prang, I just want to thank you for allowing Ian to be a part of our community as your field deputy and special assistant. And he's in the audience, say hi. So everybody could know if there's ever anything that we want to ask your office, that he's there available to answer those questions. So thank you so much for coming.
Very kind of you, thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Mr. Prang, thank you very much for coming tonight. And thank you to Ian for approaching me at the groundbreaking of the Atlantic Field at the Sentinel Valley in Hawthorne High. So I said, sure, because, you know, a few years back, you came to the Kiwanis Club of Hawthorne and gave us a presentation there. And, and that time, our median income house was about 805. So now you told me 815. So from that time until now, it went up a little bit, even if the statistic says it's a little bit low, right? So, but that's good to hear. My question to you is, if a, say a nonprofit is leasing a building from the city of Hawthorne, is, it is consciously that we have to pay tax on that?
That's a complicated question. So nonprofits can be, if they apply properly, can be exempt from property taxes. So nonprofits can be, if they apply properly, can be exempt from property taxes. Government property is exempt from property taxes. So anytime a non-governmental entity, a private entity, uses government property, it creates something called a possessory interest, and you have to pay taxes on the property that's otherwise exempt. But then because they are a nonprofit, they qualify for exemption. They have to apply for that as well. But they can also be exempted, is the short answer.
All right. Thank you very much, and again, welcome to Hawthorne, and thank you for coming. And I know you've been in a lot of cities, so again, like Senators DeBref, I'll see you everywhere. So thank you for being an active member of our community.
So you said that a nonprofit, if they say they, they're always consistently using a space here in the city of Hawthorne, they would be responsible for taxes unless they apply for an exemption?
They need to apply annually for what's called the welfare exemption.
So when they, so that when they have their nonprofit, you know, application process, a packet, whatever that is, would that be brought up to them at that point, or do they have to be kind of aware on their own?
So there's, they probably have to be aware of it. And a lot of smaller nonprofits often don't know what type of compliance reporting that they need to do. And it's kind of a double, a couple of different agencies they have to deal with. They have to apply for a welfare exemption with my office, but before that, they need to get, I think it's some type of a clearance certificate from the Board of Equalization indicating that they are a qualified nonprofit.
Awesome.
But, Mr. Mayor, you have to have a lease with the city. It's not just one time thing. You have to have a lease.
Oh, yeah, understood, yeah. The, I guess the bottom line is the fact that it's your property and that you're exempt from property taxes, you cannot transfer that tax exemption to another non-governmental entity.
Because it could be a way of bypassing that long term by people who are trying to get around that, right? So, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilors, good to be here. Thank you.
Do we have the people for the next presentation? Councilwoman, are they here?
Uh, yes.
All right, we have Councilmember Manning talking about the Southwest Carpenters Apprentice Program. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, if you could come up. I've often talked about we have to have different sources of employment, and the carpenters have a program that they're going to talk about their apprentice program. And this is an opportunity for folks that are looking to work and get into carpentry. Here's your opportunity. So they're going to explain about their program. Welcome.
Thank you. Do you happen to have an IT person present?
Yes.
It is? Okay, perfect.
Did you bring out your CD or anything?
I didn't.
Or did you, why is that?
It's yours. Sorry.
Yeah.
Unless that's it? Nope.
Did you bring your CD?
I didn't. Just on the computer right here. It's not in the cloud or anything.
Should we starting up?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, no. They're setting up still.
I bet it was loaded onto here.
What am I talking about? Uh, we want to let you know that we had a, this is the end of Latino Heritage Month, Hispanic Heritage Month. May I pretend we want to say a couple of things before they get started, because it seems like they're still setting up?
So Friday evening, we had a great event at the Hawthorne Park near, here on El Segundo and Prairie. It was closing out our Hispanic Heritage Month, and we celebrated by inviting the community to participate in dancing. We got a band, we got some food donated, and that was it, just dancing all night. And it was a great event. It was enjoyable. Thank you, City Clerk, for stopping by. I know there were some council members that wanted to come, but they were busy working. However, it went from six until nine P.M., and some folks stayed even till I was, I left at ten, just because I couldn't move any longer. I needed ice for my knees. But it was a great event, and I really appreciate all of you that did come out and participate. Channel twenty-two was there, if you watched it from home. All of you that helped volunteer and bring food and donated food, anything that you made, make happen to put this on. We really appreciate that.
We want to thank Councilman Montero for being there as well. Um, Mr. Balboa and his wife. We saw Mr. Hagerty up there dancing, some sampa tiado, so he, you know, he looked pretty good doing that. A lot of members of the community that I didn't expect to be out there dancing were there, so. I want to thank all the homeowners associations for promoting and being present. North Hawthorne, Ramona, Holly Park was there. We even had people from Holly Glen. Holly Glen, so, and all other corners of the city, so.
And our, and our city departments, Department of Public Works was very instrumental. Our city manager, our city attorney stopped by. Everyone that volunteered their time. It was really a great event. It was small, just, just perfect, the perfect size. And we really, really, really need to think about doing something like that more.
We had between five hundred to six hundred people there. We had empanadas donated by Continental Gourmet.
Continental Gourmet. Then we had pan dulce from Pan Americana Cafe or Bakery. And then we had Me California. Victor, the owner, donated some goodies, taquitos and salsa chips. And so it was a, well, yeah, oh, yes.
So did the mayor dance?
Yeah, our Hawthorne, our Hawthorne Explorers, oh my goodness. Hawthorne Explorers were giving out popcorn, and we had our community mobile unit there with Hawthorne Police. Hawthorne Police Office Association also contributed and assisted. But these gals with Hawthorne Explorers, these ladies were dancing like they'd never danced before. So it was just really fun to watch everybody enjoying their time. And again, the volunteers and everybody that participated.
Awesome. How about we move on to the Sanctuary of Hope program? We have a podium over there. We'll use that just to kind of have presentation over there while they're setting up over here, just so we could keep moving.
Jeanette Kelly is the CEO of Sanctuary of Hope. We're going to have her come up. And she's going to talk about the work that they've been doing in our city as regards to our youth, our homeless youth. They've been here, oh.
We have another podium over there, just so we could have you talk. Go ahead.
So welcome. I thought it was important for her to share some of the good things that they're doing in the community. And they, I think, recently moved here, a year, was it a year ago?
I've been here for five years.
Five years, sorry. Yeah. So I know I do, I did a tour of the location not too long ago, but I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you, City Council and all for, and Councilwoman Katrina Manning for allowing us to come by and share a little bit about what we're doing. Definitely know some of the council members and have had long, I would say, relationships with Councilwoman Reyes English. Just wanted to share a little bit about who we are, what we do, and, and kind of why hope starts here in Hawthorne and in the South Bay. My name is Janet Denise Kelly, and I am the Executive Director and Founder of Sanctuary of Hope. We are a countywide youth development and human service organization that works with young people between the ages of sixteen and twenty-five, who often are associated or identified as being child welfare or justice impacted, housing or economic insecure. We don't use the term homeless because young people don't like it, and neither do I. Young people who are expecting or parenting, as well as domestic and trafficking survivors, or any young person that would be considered at promise, right? We operate programs in South Los Angeles, here within the city of Hawthorne, Compton, Antelope Valley. And pretty much our work encompasses here within the region, the SPA eight area. And I'm not going to really go into a lot of details about who we are and what we do, because that could be found on our, definitely could be found on our, on our website and the fact sheet that I have, that I'm hoping that I could pass out to you before, before leaving. Four pillars really undergird the work that we do. And those four pillars of hope is prevention, stabilization, advocacy, and activism. And what undergirds also that work, or that centers the work, is the fact that, one, our engagements and the work that we have with young people in the community is very communal. It's relational. It's also intergenerational, and it's rooted in social justice. Although organizationally, we serve about twelve hundred young people a year throughout the county. And within the city of Hawthorne, we serve about two hundred young people who benefit from services such as life coaching, counseling, document readiness, housing, leadership development, crisis and problem-solving services, financial assistance, basic needs, system navigation, or literally almost anything that requires to help a young person stabilize and get on their feet. We also master lease a handful of units here within the city of Hawthorne that provides five beds of transitional housing, including a family unit. And hopefully by June of next year, we are going to master lease an additional two units that will increase our beds by four more. In addition to the direct services offered, we also engage young people in policy and advocacy and activism with the partnership that we have with the Daimly Institute. We have a Thinking Lives Matter series that engages young people in civic education. And since its inception, more than thirty young people have culminated from the program, and we're going to be culminating another fifteen young people from that program relatively soon in November. And we also have a policy and advocacy institute, as well as a destinations program that is a leadership program designed around international and national travels to connect and empower young people in global citizenship, solidarity, leadership, and philanthropy. And we recently had two youth from the city of Hawthorne who participated in our most recent humanitarian trip to Cuba to deliver over a hundred and twenty pounds of medical supplies and learn about various forms of equity, health equity, environmental equity, education, et cetera. And one of our leaders, who is a resident here within the city, joined us on that trip. And she also was appointed to the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority HEIFLA board to represent the SPA eight region. And she will be sharing a few words after I pretty much wrap up. But although, you know, the services that we have here fills a critical gap for youth development, youth development services, we are in constant need of filling two major gaps or crises that we encounter. One is the lack of crisis at interim housing beds solely for youth that are youth-centered, because they're relatively few and far between. And oftentimes, young people are connected to housing or stable housing interventions that are outside of the city of Hawthorne or the South Bay, where they have to be housed in either South Los Angeles, Hollywood, or even the valley, and God forbid, downtown L.A. We are also grateful to have been matched to E V, E H V, the emergency housing vouchers from the city of Hawthorne for our youth. Although we are extremely grateful, however, we have not been highly successful in the placement due to the low payment standards and finding landlords who are willing to accept those housing vouchers at that rate, mainly because they're not aligned with what's happening currently in the market. And it's caused a few of our young people to lose those vouchers or port to other communities within the county, the city, or even further south, the city of Long Beach, in order to preserve it and not lose it. So it's one of my asks that I'm hoping that we're able to get resolved in the near future, because those vouchers are priceless, especially for young people on their path to stability. And Sanctuary of Hope is where hope starts. And I hope in the, in the upcoming month, which is National Runaway Prevention and Homeless Youth Awareness Month, that you will be able to participate with us in a kickoff that we're having at the Aura, which is located in La Mer Park. It's an event that we do every year to commemorate the month. But also, unlike the, like the Night Day, which is on November seventeenth, we're hoping that the city could find a location where they could light the night green to commemorate the month. And without further ado, very shortly, I would like to invite Amina Parker up, who is a past, present, former participant in Sanctuary of Hope's program, but also is the representative for LASSA's HEIFLA board.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for that introduction. Hello, Hawthorne, the city of Hawthorne. My name is Amina Parker. Can I, can I be like this? It's kind of hard. Okay. All right, so, okay. Yeah, I'm tall. Okay. Hi, okay, hi, my name is Amina Parker, and as Ms. Kelly has stated, I am a resident of Hawthorne. I received services from Sanctuary of Hope, and they was able to give me an E H V voucher by last year. The process was actually quick, and I'm extremely grateful to be actually housed this year. So I actually have stable housing, because last year I was homeless. And at the time when I was homeless, I was going to school. So with their services, I have committed myself to continue to make an impact in my community for other people to receive housing vouchers and just be able to improve their living conditions. As it pertains to me working with Sanctuary of Hope, Sanctuary of Hope not only helped me become, you know, permanently housed, they actually empower youth like me to be leaders and advocates of our community to still construct so, social policy around the homeless crisis. So as I got my new position on the HEIFLA board that's under LASSA, we have continuous efforts to improve homelessness, which we are trying to work with the D C F S, the D M H, to have collaborative efforts to end homeless crisis by having youth who actually went through the lived experience of going through homelessness, be in those centers, and actually advocate on the, on the behalf of people going through homelessness. The reason why I say this is because if you do not have the people who actually experience homelessness in these facilities, a lot of people will not be able to understand and really connect with the youth who's going through it. Also outreach. Since I actually went to C S U D H, Dominguez Hills, I actually graduated this year. And since I've been a part of Sanctuary of Hope, thank you so much. Since I've been a part of Sanctuary of Hope, it's been my mission to continue to have the efforts of Sanctuary of Hope and any other nonprofits be on these campuses to do outreach so people know that there are services available. That is a problem. A lot of youth do not know that we have homeless services available, and they turn to the streets. You won't know who's homeless unless you go up to them and ask. They look like me. I looked like this last year. I look exactly like this until you actually talk to me and know my situation. So serving on the HEIFLA board for SPA eight, I continue those efforts to make a change within my community and also give back to Sanctuary of Hope, who actually gave me hope to believe in the system within Hawthorne to actually find me housing. So thank you, and I want to continue to do those efforts while being on the board for HEIFLA, which is a homeless youth forum of Los Angeles.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. Any comments? Go ahead.
Wow, what an inspiring story. I'm just up here teary-eyed. Thank you so much for your story. Thank you so much for continuing to advocate for our homeless youth. We often don't think that looking at somebody like you would be homeless because... because you don't fit the description of what we normally see. And so we just glaze past people like you. So I'm so glad that you came up and shared your story. And I will continue to be an advocate for our homeless population as well. So thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
Yes, well, Sanctuary of Hope, thank you for being here in our audience today. Ms. Kelly and I have been longtime colleagues. Thank you for the opportunity to tour also the offices here that are in Hawthorne. We also had an opportunity, councilmember and I, to greet some of your placements that you gave housing to here in Hawthorne, and we gave them a welcome basket, if you remember that. And the city manager came out. We came out with camera channel 22 and provided a story of how these individuals who were, at the time, were struggling. And then here they are given a home. And we gave them a basket to give them a home. What would you call that? A home, welcome home basket? So it's just wonderful to see that. And then I know we're always talking about our housing element and how we're doing with housing. And you're listed as one of those providers that is providing housing to those that are in need. And I always see your name listed, and I'm so happy to see that. The council is always working hard to address housing needs. I wish that we could have more funding opportunities to provide to those that are really doing the work, such as yourself. And again, we'll continue to push, to advocate. Myself, homeless, living in a car for two years, I get it. I understand it. I'm truly humbled. It's not about me, but it's hearing those stories that ultimately don't ever let me forget. And so it's a way of remembering and knowing exactly what you mean when you sit on a committee and understand it and you get it. So I truly champion you and how you're working hard to address those needs for our youth. And just want to say thank you for being here. You're always welcome. If there's anything we could collaborate with, please let us know. We'd be more than happy to assist you. Thank you.
Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Kelly and Amina, for telling me your story. And that's one of the things that, long time and continuing, we know that the struggle of foster youth that's coming out of the system. And then they put them in a group home when they turn 16 to 25. And even, I'm glad that Senator Steve Breck is still here because we know the governor put more money into jails instead of the youth programs to house youth, especially those that are coming from the foster care. So I know Senator Breck has been a champion about youth development a long time ago. But it is important, especially now, that the state have allowed community college to build housing into the campus, right? So they were going to give those kids and people like you, Amina, a house into college so they don't need to be struggled to be homeless, to be on a car, or be on RVs. So the Sanctuary of Hope has been here for like five years, and we appreciate all the work that you have done because we know there is a struggle, continued struggle, to get the youths where they're supposed to be. And that's why we need more funding. And then actually, stay along because the carpenters are here, right? And they're going to talk about apprenticeship. So I would love to see some of the youth go to the carpenter, do apprenticeships over there because I keep telling people, career tech, like carpenters, plumber, electrician, we're not going to call China or Indonesia for plumbing because we need to plumbing now. So those are the jobs that we need to create right here at home. And that is what I always keep telling kids. Go to community college, get two-year credits, and then get a career so you can get paid $25 an hour or even $30 an hour. Or even, you know, electrician can pay $95 an hour. So make sure that these kids know, and so they don't get these tremendous student loans. But they have a job, a apprenticeship program that it's pay, and then they can go to college, four-year college, and they already have two-year credit. So they will not be a student loan. So keep doing a great job. And anything like Ms. English said, anything we can do, we support you and make sure that we're going to get more funding from the state, from the federal government, because we need more housing in this city, especially for the young youth. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Katrina, for your agenda today with Sanctuary City. Thank you.
You're welcome. So are we ready, Mayor?
Thank you, folks. Councilmember Manning, Southwest Carpenters Apprenticeship Program.
Are we ready now?
Yeah, they're ready. It looks like it.
Okay.
Current slide.
We're good. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Corey Crockham. I'm a business rep with the Southwest Mountain State's Regional Council of Carpenters. I was here in the past talking about tax fraud. It's one of the slides in here. And at the end, I'll go in a little bit in-depth of our pre-apprenticeship programs that Ms. Manning is talking about.
Hello, yes, good evening, Mayor Vargas and councilmembers. Maria Coronado, I'm here to present as well. Southwest Mountain State's Carpenter's Representative. We're going to start with a short video.
What's going on, carpenters? Stayed out here strong as usual. We got to stay working around here. So let's keep it going, make that money. We're the ones making this economy strong and keep it going as best we can.
The union is supporting us, and we have work.
Help me pay my bills, my mortgage, food on the table for my family. My whole sole purpose of getting into the carpenters' union was to get a roof over my family's head and food on the table. I got to bring home the money.
The work of carpenters is something that I love and I feel proud of.
It's good because you have benefits. At the time of receipt, it helps a lot.
The way that I help out is like, you know, I get paid. And then whatever I earn, I end up spending back and putting back into the community because it's all a cycle.
I'm actually standing on the walkway or the bike path of the Gerald Desmond Bridge. We've had carpenters and power drivers working here for the last eight years steady. This is just a historic project that's going to last forever.
Like I said, this is one of the biggest projects in Southern California. So it was an honor, you know, and a privilege to be here, you know, especially for this long. Like I've been here, you know, over five years now.
I built this whole structure here from the bottom up, which is pretty awesome.
As you can see here, I helped build the SoFi Stadium.
Been working on the rebound connector for about a little bit over two years now. This project is very exciting to be on. It's really awesome.
Looks great.
Thank you. So slide number one here, we have Southwest Mountain State's Regional Council of Carpenters represents more than 90,000 members in Southern California, Nevada, Arizona, Utah, New Mexico, Colorado, Washington, Idaho, Montana, Wyoming, Oregon, and Alaska. We work with contractors, developers, and elected leaders to raise the standard of building and living for all workers. As an affiliate of the United Brotherhood of Carpenters and Joiners of America, Southwest Mountain State's Regional Council of Carpenters is the largest council in the Brotherhood. This is our first meeting, and we wanted to start here in Hawthorne.
Yeah, this slide here is a map of the Southwest Mountain State's area that we cover. So 36 locals over 12 states, and we have the most locals here in Southern California.
So as you can see, we have the apprenticeship pathways. On the left-hand side goes from pre-apprentice to first-period apprentice all the way to eighth-period apprentice to journeyman. Those are the steps that our apprenticeship classes take. Career pathways in the middle, we have pre-apprentice. You'll hear more about our pre-apprenticeship programs a little bit later in the presentation. We have an apprentice, journeyman, foreman, general foreman, moving up to superintendent, and then entrepreneurial opportunities. The work we do aerospace, carpentry, interior-exterior, systems maintenance, millwright work, mill cabinetry, modular systems, pile driving scaffolding, and much, much more.
Here's a map of our training centers. We have 27 training centers, 14 different crafts taught, 1,790 classes offered, 18,079 students attending classes. So on the Southwest Mountain State's Training Fund, recognize apprenticeship at the state and federal level, world-class training centers, weekend enhancement classes, a variety of certification, hands-on experience, college credit, compliance-driven OSHA certifications, and Earn While You Learn career. So our pre-apprenticeship programs are Brothers Keepers and our Boots, which stands for Bridging Outstanding Opportunities with Trades Women's Skills. Both these programs are held over here at our Carson facility, 1010 Sand Hill. Both of these programs works with the local communities to increase support for the membership in the carpenters' union. They're both four-week programs, teaches you soft skills, hard skills necessary to get hired on the job site. No construction experience required. Instructions include OSHA, 10 certifications, math for the trades, material and tool recognition, handling, intro to concrete formwork and metal stud framing, and assists with job placement once they complete the program.
So that actually gives them a good head start. Once they get on the job, they have some knowledge. But we're starting even earlier. As you can see, on the right-hand side, we have Career Connections. Career Connections gives students the tools they need for successful careers in construction. The program integrates academic skills with practical applications, allowing students to evaluate career options in the construction industry. Students receive technology, techno, you know what I'm trying to say, advanced training and practical STEM education taught by skilled and seasoned instructors. Over 10,000 students are currently enrolled in the Southwest Mountain State's Carpenter's 100-plus Career Connection programs across six states in California, Nevada, Arizona, Utah, New Mexico, and Colorado. And I know we'll be expanding to other states. Carpenter Combine Day, something we do at Trade Tech every year. We also have one in San Diego where people can come in off the street, have the opportunity to join the union, where contractors have the opportunity to hire right away for in-demand projects. It's good-paying, living wages, union jobs that can change lives and communities by creating new pathways to health and prosperity to all.
Here at Local 323, we have 1,602 members. I think we started out at 1,400 or so, maybe last December. So we're growing with the pre-apprenticeship program pretty fast here. There's a couple of projects here, the YouTube Theater, the Intuit Dome, LAX People Mover, and the SoFi Stadium. We also got the Inglewood People Mover. And LAX has $30 billion over the next eight years. So we'll have a place for these folks to go and work.
So we were here earlier in the year talking about tax fraud. So a growing number of construction contractors are tax cheats. They pay their employees off the books or often wrongly classify them as independent contractors. This is intentional. Many use labor brokers and operate in the dark shadows of the underground economy. More than 8.4 billion a year is lost to construction industry employer tax fraud. 302 million in the state of California. Tax fraud cheats our communities out of vital revenue that funds our schools, firefighters, police officers, social services, general fund. It affects our sales tax, and we don't like that very much. So something that we need to keep an eye out for.
Community Wealth, it's one of our initiatives. A partnership for community wealth is a win-win for Hawthorne. Partnering with the Southwest Mountain State's Carpenters helps to ensure that developers are not just building buildings in your city. Instead, they're building health and wealth for Hawthorne residents by adhering to local labor standards and community hiring protocols. Earlier this year, I'm sorry, yeah, I think that was this year. So we have a couple of initiatives that we've helped get passed or some legislation, AB 2011. This allows for mixed-use income housing along commercial corridors as long as the project meets specific affordability, labor, and environmental criteria. SB 4 gives nonprofit colleges and churches, mosques, and other faith institutions the right to build affordable housing on their land. And SB 423 extends a decade, extends by a decade, a state housing law set to expire in 2026 that lets developers skip much of the bureaucracy process, often blamed for blocking construction of the multifamily projects, though only in cities that have fallen behind on state-mandated housing goals.
What have we been talking about tonight? Prosperity. Prosperity begins with union jobs, wages, and benefits. And as you can see, there's a QR code there. You can scan that. That will take you to our 323 flow code. There's a plethora of information there if you want to check that out. That concludes our presentation. We're open for questions.
Awesome. Go ahead, Councilmember Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have no question, but I want to say thank you very much for your presentation because I visit your center in Carson, a beautiful facility, and it's very big. So I want, you know, people to take advantage of this opportunity because like I said before, you know, apprenticeship is very important, especially for kids that come from out of the high school. And then the way to the college path, they can still go to apprenticeship program and even get paid in learning a skill. So it's very good and outstanding, and for you guys to give this opportunity, and then you have the facility right down the street, right, from us. So it's very important. And again, you know, we have to keep eye on these contractors, right? When they come, like you mentioned about the Clipper Stadium, the Intuit Dome, that some of your workers, carpenters, you know, they didn't put them to work, right? Because they brought some outside of people from other counties, and they didn't give you guys the fair share of hands-on on the project. So we have to keep eye on those. And like you said, the same thing, we have to keep eye on this tax fraud, right? For these subcontractors that doesn't want to pay taxes and that you want to do job under the table, like what we call. So thank you for being here and to give people a sense that union jobs are important to our economy because especially very important for living wages. Like you said, good benefits, good jobs right there. So thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate that.
Thank you. To the chair. You were talking about your 12 regions, the states that you represent, and all those union jobs. I reflect back on my upbringing, born and raised in Idaho. I'm the only one here in California. There's 10 of us. And all my family members, if not some, are in unions, including electricians, et cetera. And I often think about the low pays that they receive, right? California is so much in advance with regards to dollars and equity. And so I just reflect on that, and I think to myself, wow, I'm so glad that I was trained to drive a heister. I know how to drive a tractor. I know how to lay irrigation pipes. I know how to work a sawmill. And I am like, all thanks to my dad, right? And that's, I often tell people, I'm not a girly girl. So if you need any labor, I know how to work labor, trust me. But thank goodness, fast forward, you know, where I'm at today to be able to just support unions and understand it and help spread the word that there's apprentice jobs available to those that want to work in the apprentice industry. And, you know, it's not necessarily a college-driven endeavor. There's other opportunities. So thank you so much for coming and presenting.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
I know there's multiple locals, so I work with, I've worked before with Local 562 out of Long Beach. Ray and Rafael and a couple of the other guys. So if you guys see them, let them know we said hi. But I also work in the jails. And one of the things that I tell jails, they're fighting their cases, so they're not going upstate yet. So there's a possibility that they get released, et cetera. So I'd be interested in maybe connecting you guys directly to our re-entry program people so that they could refer people to your program once released so that they can knock on your door and say, hey, you know what? Do you have something for me? Can I work out and work with you guys on something? So if you can, I mean, I know the guys over there, but if you guys have a card that I could have, so maybe since you're closer to the DTLA area where the jail is, maybe this might, they might go to you first before they go to them. So thank you so much for being here. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to say one thing, that we do actively go out and recruit in the community. We do hit the payroll office. We hit, you know, at-risk youth. We go to juvenile halls. We're actively out there. Carpenter's is known as the second chance organization, one of the best-kept secrets. And we don't want to be the best-kept secret anymore. And we wanted to be a first chance organization so that we can give folks before they end up just as impacted.
I didn't realize you had so many students. What, like 13,000, 18,000? Or what was it? 18,000, man. Just imagine. That's a lot of bodies, man.
And through the chair, actually, also they have a partnership with the Sentinel Valley School District for the Academy, the Carpenter Academy. So I saw you over there last week. So thank you very much too for that partnership.
True. And then when you finish the apprenticeship program, you can take your basic courses and end up with an associate. and end up with an associate's degree in carpentry. It's college credit as well.
To the Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. All right.
Or it didn't happen, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much for coming.
City Clerk?
Pursuant to government code section 549, 54.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Barry Rosen, South.
Good evening. If I might, just before my time starts, I'd like to say something based on what I just heard is, something you guys may not be aware of is, since you have an airport, there's a huge demand for pilots, and you guys should be developing programs to bring underprivileged kids into be pilots because they can make six figures a year. Right now, the, for top pilot salaries, they're getting $500,000 a year, so it's a good profession. So I'd just say that before I get started. Anyways, I come in front of you tonight as a concerned citizen because I've become aware of the fact that the City Attorney's Office has not brought a lawsuit to your attention that should have been brought to your attention in closed session, should have been agendized and brought to your attention. So I thought I would come tonight and bring it to your attention. Part of the reason why I'm concerned is because outside counsel was just hired, and I'm aware that under state law, that needs to come into your purview in a closed session, agendized, et cetera, and that hasn't been done. So I'm urging you to look into this matter, the suit in, in question, and I'm kind of limited in what I can say because there's active litigation going on between myself and the city. But the case is, my name is Barry Rosen, and the case involves your red light cameras and the complete unlawful operation of those cameras, and the fact that there hasn't been apparently any supervision to ensure, for many, many years from what we're finding out, to ensure that there is lawful operation of the red light cameras. So that's pretty much about all I can say. I, I would say this, that I'm happy to come and discuss this with you in closed session. There's a lot that I think you and the City Manager need to know about what's happening. I would say also this, that Allison Stevens has made some on-the-record comments that are quite disturbing and would seem to indicate that people's civil rights have been violated in the process of the operation of the cameras, which could get the city into huge trouble and could be very costly to the city. And I'm actually here really, you know, putting out my hand to kind of help you guys with this. I'm not really trying to be adversarial, but, you know, and I, and I really hope that I can help, and I would love to sit down and talk with you guys and see if we can help fix your situation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And since you've launched the lawsuit against the city, we won't be dealing with you directly. Your attorneys will be dealing with our City Attorney.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, so, thank you.
Daniel Granados, please.
Hello, Daniel Granados, manager of Hawthorne Library, part of LA County Library. Just wanted to say, share a couple of updates from the library. Currently, we are participating in the In-N-Out Cover-to-Cover Program, so participants in the program can earn free In-N-Out. It is for ages four through 12, sorry, Mayor Vargas, ages four through 12 only. But that's all going through the end of November. And let's see, we have the LA County Department of Public Health Mobile Vaccine Team, holding monthly vaccine clinics at the library. The next one coming up is November 30th, and they are providing the 2023, 24 COVID vaccine as well as flu shots. The library also has an ongoing supply of free at-home COVID tests. Those are free to anyone. You can stop by any time and pick those up. You may not know, but the library has some study rooms available that can be booked by individuals or groups. Those rooms can now be booked online at lacountylibrary.org. We have three individual study rooms and one group study room. Those are very popular if you haven't seen them yet. Also this week, the Friends of the Library are having a buy-one-get-one-free sale on all items in their ongoing sale. Feel free to stop by and pick up a few items there. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Beverly Brinson, MMB's, Eminem Soul Food.
I need to get over to the library, visit the library.
Good evening.
Visit the library.
This is Mayor and distinguished council. My name is Beverly Brinson. I'm 74 years young. Check me out.
Yeah.
I cook soul food. Check me out. People always say, you cook soul food, how do you look like you look? I look like I look because I cook soul food. What I'm here today to talk to you guys about is a challenge that I'm having. I came out here from Jackson, Mississippi in 1974 on a Greyhound bus with $14 and two babies running away from abusive husband. That gives you a little understanding of what I'm about. I'm a strong black woman. The challenge that I have right now is with the homeless. There's a hotel down the street from the restaurant, 4549 West Imperial Highway, that's where the restaurant is. And most of you probably have already been there already to get some soul food, okay? Because I see a lot of you in here that's been there, okay? Anyway, there's this hotel that's two buildings east of me. I think it's 4501 Imperial. And they are housing the homeless. I've never had any problems until lately. I've changed my times at the restaurant from regular every day. Now I'm only open from Thursday through Sunday, from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The homeless have broken into my restaurant. I've never had this, anything like this happen before. And they stole the tablets, which I didn't understand. I have all this on tape too, you know? And they stole four of the tablets. Now you probably know the tablets are what comes in with my orders for the food and stuff, okay? This was really hard for us because we had all these orders coming in, but we don't have any tablets now to get the orders. So it was very confusing for us, okay? I've had the homeless to approach me. I open up every morning at 6:00 AM, that's when I come in. And I was coming in at 6:00 AM with the manager. And this particular day, the manager was late. So I opened up and go in myself and open up everything because he said he was almost right behind me. So I do my thing, open it up or whatever. And so the manager says to me, he says, well, I'm right behind you, so go do what you gotta do. So I leave out of the restaurant, I left. Is it almost time?
Keep going, keep going.
Okay, so, so I leave out, and I don't talk long. I don't know what's going on up there, okay? Anyway, so I leave out of the restaurant, I leave the door open. And I guess this person had been watching me, I don't know. But anyway, and I have it all on tape, and that's when they came in, took their time and take the tablets, and we see this on the tape, and takes the tablets, and then walks out the door. Now, my greatest concern that my kids have is that what had happened if I had walked in there when this person was doing what they were doing? Okay, needless to say, my son now comes to me every morning, I have to go get him now at 6 o'clock in the morning to come walk me into the restaurant. Never had anything like this happen before. I've also had them to approach me, I had one just the other day to approach me with no shirt on, and wanted to know, did I want some of this? Now, I don't know what this was, okay, that he handed to me in, in his hand. And so I just told him, no, no, thank you, and I went on in the building. I've had other incidents that's happened, and my customers are complaining. They come into the bathroom, they come and get hand sanitizers, they beg from the customers for food and for money, and it's been very, very hard for us as a business, okay? I have nothing against homeless people because I could be wanted anytime, just like the rest of them. But I only think that they should do and respect businesses. There's, I'm out.
Yeah, the time is, can you just, yeah?
Let me end this by saying I'm greatly concerned about the homeless, and we need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Could you, ma'am, could you talk to either a deputy or the chief? Chief of Police? Because this stuff needs to be documented in case we could figure out if it's directly a result of that hotel or not. And if it is, once, twice, three times, then we have an issue with the county, okay? As a city, so we need to make sure we have things that are documented and proven. Okay? Thank you, ma'am. All right. I have no further cards, no more cards? Anybody wishing to speak, please form a line. If you're going to speak, please form a line so we know how many people we're expecting, guys. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
All right. Good evening, my name is Dolores Ramos. I'm representing myself here tonight regarding a young homeless Caucasian female who is, who lives at Memorial Park in Hawthorne. She's had her front teeth knocked out, she's been raped, she's been, I've given her more than 10 blankets, all of which are always stolen. No female homeless otherwise deserve to be raped. This particular female also have mental issues, but again, she doesn't deserve the disrespect, rape, and physical attacks bestowed upon her. I'm asking the city to reach out to her and to help her get off the streets and into a safe place to live. That's it.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay. We're not able to respond, that's why. But if you have, if you want to fill out a card, City Manager, can you give her a sheet? Maybe she'd like to follow up? And then we'll follow up with you on that issue. Okay, ma'am? Mr. Gordon Migo?
Hello, everyone. Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October the 8th, 1952. Since the 1980s, Los Angeles County has embarked on plans to design and build a metro rail system that would provide an alternative mode of transportation for people to reach their destinations. To date, there has been numerous miles of track lanes, stations built, and so on. In another year or so, LAX Airport will be connected to the metro rail system via an extension of the C/Green Line. Additionally, there is consideration of three routes to extend the metro rail, C/Green Line, from its terminus at Marine Avenue near the 405 freeway to a rail transit hub in Torrance. There are two proposed routes that would run through residential neighborhoods between Hawthorne Boulevard and Inwood Avenue in the city of Lawndale. Residents in the immediate and surrounding areas have objected to the routes strenuously, which would affect the health and safety of the people due to the location of the rail tracks near homes. The third proposed route would follow the 405 freeway to Hawthorne Boulevard where it turns south, and this is an elevated track, mind you, the extension, where it would turn south onto, and travel along Hawthorne Boulevard to 190th Street, which is a more beneficial route for the South Bay. On September 29th, 2023, LA County Supervisor Holly Mitchell painted a delay of the vote on the matter in the selection of the routes by the Metro Board. On August 17th, 2022, I gave public testimony, about a half hour worth, about this issue, and expressed my support for the third option, the elevated extension that would go from the Marine Avenue terminus along 405 freeway to Hawthorne Boulevard and going south there. And then it would go further on towards, you know, Torrance. So I hope that, and I know that Item 20 is going to speak to that in regards to a letter of support, and I think that's a great idea. And it's important that we make, make this very strongly aware, you know, to these folks that are going to be deciding on a very important transportation, construction project. Thank you.
Next person, please.
Good evening. Ruben with the North Hawthorne Community Association. Been a long time. I'm here because, I never thought I was going to hear a speech with pro-cannabis and homelessness under the same breath. You know, I wonder what's next, they start opening up liquor stores and bars next to AA meetings? Because that's exactly what they were talking about, and no one really caught that. I'm here because I want to speak a little bit more on the darker side of homelessness, because that's what we're dealing with in the north side of Hawthorne. The darker side of homelessness, there's crime being committed in businesses with residents. On the darker side of homelessness, we have people defecating, urinating all over the streets. On the darker side of homelessness, business owners, business personnel are being threatened. This is something that's been going on and kind of like, just kind of like the parking, it just moved from one side to the other. And it's been going on for a long time. And, and I know the number one thing you guys do is just point at the Chief of Police and let, let him handle it. And this shouldn't be a, a job for the police department. It should be a job for you guys. Start creating certain ordinances to where like, we need, so you can, guys can give teeth to our police officer in order to make their job much easier. You know, that's why I'm, I'm going to come with a, with a different approach here. This is going to be directly to the mayor. I'm going to invite you on a ride-along, Mr. Mayor. So you can, and I'll get you one of your favorite Bobas, Boba drinks too. And we can ride around in the certain areas so you can see for yourself, you can smell for yourself, you can speak to some of these homeowners, and you can speak to these residents, you can also talk to these business owners. And this way, next time, when you have like Mr. Steven Bradford here talking about how everything's nice and perky, you can ask some other questions. Every one of you can ask some other questions in regards of the darker side of homelessness, because there is one. And then also, as you might have known from the past, one of my board members was groped by, by a homeless person. Besides you, Mr. Mayor, and, and City Manager, and Police, I know you guys talked to our board member, thank you for that. And just wanted to say, mention that, and I hope you take that proposition, Mr. Mayor. And we hope to hear from you, and maybe next time I don't have to be here, and I could be home watching The Golden Bachelor. And so, thank you, have a good night, God bless the city of Hawthorne.
Mr. Ronnie Manson?
Hello again. It was a great event on Friday.
You were dancing, right?
Again, we, our, the church on El Segundo has been vandalized, been broken into. Now it's, it's getting to the point where you, you gotta hire, have security at a church seven days a week. I've been there every day, making sure the doors are, the gates are closed, the doors are locked. We've, our office was vandalized, ransacked. They, our kitchen, kitchen was vandalized. I guess they, they had a shindig of drinking holy wine or whatever, and they stole all the keys from the church. We had to replace all the, replace the locks on the church. Of course, me, even though I've been, I'm, I have to go in every night, every day, make sure the doors are locked. We have a day program that comes in that handle, works with the clients with disability. We got to make sure it's safe for them to come in, make sure that they're, we've been having homeless vagrants surrounding, you know, sleeping on our doors, breaking in, breaking down the gates to get in. We put padlocks on the gates, but that, that doesn't deter them. They, they find ways of bending the, the gates to get in. And I drive by every night, and we do, we have other organizations that use our parish hall that, they wonder why I'm there. they wonder why I'm there. I said, well, I was, I'm ordered by the, the church to, uh, make sure it's safe for people that's, uh, using our hall, that they can feel safe, the women can feel safe for coming in. We've had several vagrants come in, they, uh, we have AA that comes, uses our, our hall every day but Wednesdays and Sundays, and people feel uncomfortable because you don't know the gates open. So you can't close the gates, 'cause you got members that are celeb- celebrating, you know, the sobriety. But you get homeless people to come in and sit there, and they go through the kitchen, and they go through the office, and they ain't got time to deal with the homeless people. So that, you know, and I'm not an alcoholic, but they, they don't feel comfortable me being there. I said, well, the church has asked me to make sure that, you know, it's safe for everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Ronnie. No, I just said, thank you, Ronnie.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I don't see anyone further, so oral communication is close ordered. City Clerk, your agenda, calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have seven items on the consent calendar. There are Items five through eleven for your consideration and approval. Item five, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item six, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants for October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Item seven, approval of City Council minutes for the regular meeting of September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Item eight, Resolution number eight four four zero, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming the month of October, two thousand twenty-three, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Hawthorne. Item nine, Resolution number eight four four one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, supporting equal pay for women. Item ten, Resolution eight four four two, resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving the application for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development pathways to removing obstacles to housing grant. Item eleven, Resolution eight four four three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming the month of November, two thousand twenty-three, as Native American Heritage Month in Hawthorne for adoption.
I move.
Second. The motions given to Councilwoman, uh, Mayor Protem, second to, uh, Councilmember Patterson. Please vote.
The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
The bids, please. Madam Clerk?
Item twelve, now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for the Northeast Hawthorne Mobility Improvement Project. That's number two one dash zero five. There were five bids received. All were accompanied by bidders' bonds. The prices are as follows. All American Asphalt, four million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars. Hardy and Harper Incorporated, four million, six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Sequel Contractors, three million, seven hundred sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Sully Miller Contracting Company, four million, eight hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars. Palp Incorporated DBA Excel Paving, four million, five hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars.
I move to refer to staff for study and recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Okay, next item, please, thirteen.
Item thirteen, now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for Hawthorne Housing Rehabilitation of City-Owned Properties, two thousand twenty-three. That's project number two three dash zero nine. There were two bids received. All were accompanied by bidders' bonds. The prices are as follows. Con- consecret DBA Adolfos Construction, Construction, blah, blah, excuse me, uh, twelve million, five hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred ten dollars. Classic Engineering and Construction, four million, one hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars.
I move to refer to staff for study and recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
The voting reflects Mayor and Council voting yes.
Do we need this presentation, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Do we need a presentation for this, or could we vote for fourteen?
Yep.
Our first public hearing is Item fourteen. Madam Clerk?
Item fourteen, now is the time and place for a public hearing and introduction of ordinance number two two four zero, amending Title seventeen of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, bringing it in, bring it in compliance with the housing ordinance. No written communications were received.
Okay, ma'am, if you could do this as abbreviated as you can, go ahead, please.
I will do my best. Hello, City Council members. Thank you for hearing this item tonight. My name is Kimmy Nguyen, and I work with RRM Design Group. Um, my colleagues Diane Bathgate and Colette Morris of Morris Planning Group are here with me. Um, we, um, have been collaborating with your, um, planning department in order to bring these zoning code amendments to you tonight. Um, to be more specific, these are zoning amendments that have to do with housing. So we heard a lot of presentation and public comment on the human face of, um, housing impacts in, in your community. And so I'm here to talk about the more technical, like, implementation side. So if you'll bear with me, just put on that hat for a few minutes, and I'll take you through this. Um, we'll be available, and Greg, um, Greg McLean from Planning, um, will also be available to answer your questions, if you have any, at the end. So I think, as we all know, um, California is in a state of worsening crisis due to lack of housing. Um, Governor Newsom has, you know, declared the state of emergency and probably affirmed it many times at this point. Um, and you're seeing those impacts here and, um, and basically every community that I've seen in, in California. As you know, um, the state legislature has been trying to respond to this crisis. Um, every year, we see new legislation come out. Um, for the past eight years, it's been basically a fire hose of just trying to attack the problem from every single angle. Also, as you know, a little bit of background, but hopefully it's in your recent memory. Um, the housing element that your city adopted in twenty twenty-two um, is basically the housing plan envisioned for the next, um, several years. And that housing element, um, makes certain commitments as to what it can do to enable housing constructions. So most cities are not in the business of actually building and constructing housing, but they do need to make it possible. And, uh, the Governor's Office is making it more and more clear. They're trying to hold cities accountable to those promises that they make. Housing elements used to be kind of, um, they would be adopted, and the follow-through was a little uneven at best when you went from community to community. And so some of those problems are kinda catching up with other, other communities, not just yours today. Um, an important part of the housing element is the regional housing needs allocation, a bit of a mouthful. We, we call it RENA. And that's just a projected, um, housing amount, amount of units that your city is, um, basically trying to target at, you know, um, moderate levels of income, low levels of income, a variety of different types of homes. And, uh, the state assigns this number to each community and jurisdiction and tries to hold them accountable, like I said, for enacting the policy to be able to make those things happen. So RRM Design Group and Morris Planning Group, um, were able to work with the city as a result of grant funding, um, by the state. And so I will keep it brief, but the grant funding covers, uh, these four items, so that it would be Items fourteen through seventeen um, on the public hearing agenda. Firstly, there's the housing element implementation ordinance. Uh, there's the zoning map, objective design standards ordinance, and Senate Bill Nine implementing ordinance. Um, just wanted to talk a little bit about the process that we u- use to, um, develop these standards. Obviously, we had a, a ton to follow up on with your recently adopted housing element. So there was, um, a lot to build on in terms of the people that you reached out to, the vision that was sort of cast for the, the future and the growth of the city. Um, we talked to stakeholders from across your community. Uh, we kicked this off during COVID, so it wasn't always easy. But we did talk to, um, representatives from your business community, um, your school district, um, even your faith com- community and social services. And they were all just telling us how they were personally impacted and in their work, um, by the lack of housing for the people they serve. Um, we also talked to focus groups with your development community um, and identified where the city could remove obstacles and barriers to affordable development, try to meet the mandates of the state while tailoring, I guess, policy to work in your community. Um, last month, the Planning Commission heard these four items that are before you, and they voted three zero in favor of recommending them to you. So they were supportive. Um, the first ordinance that we have in front of you is the Housing Element Implementation Ordinance. It's a bit of a cleanup and a catch-all, so, um, the way zoning ordinances work, um, it can be pretty onerous to keep up with the, just the flurry of legislation coming down from the state. And the state has, um, mandated that, um, specific housing types, like employee housing, um, residential care facilities, transitional housing, and supportive housing are all treated a certain way in your zoning code. And so this is just a cleanup to get those into compliance with what the state is requiring of you. Um, this was called out as a specific program in the housing element, so we believe we are meeting that commitment that we've already made. Um, this ordinance also proposes a new chapter, which is a housing overlay. Um, an overlay is just a zoning term, um, that is applied to specific properties in clearly defined geographic areas. And we worked with your staff to pick out, um, specific properties that actually were already identified in the housing element um, and see where there were basically opportunities for new residential construction. So that's the first ordinance. Um, the second one is a little more simple. It's, it's a zoning map. So the changes that I described to the overlay of trying to make new opportunities, um, for housing is just going in with, um, kind of a focused, um, set of changes to your zoning map. And that was also identified as a program in the housing element. So we're just kinda ticking these things off. Um, the third ordinance, um, Item sixteen is objective design standards. So the state's, um, set of new legislation has, um, basically required local agencies to change the way that they do development and that they do, take in applications. You may or may not know, um, depending on your experience, that the traditional development process can be a little murky, um, both on the decision-maker side, the public side, and a potential applicant's side. Um, sometimes, when it comes to the design of a certain building, you end up negotiating, negotiating a lot of these things on a case-by-case basis. Sometimes it's behind closed doors, which is not great for transparency. Um, and so the purpose of this ordinance is to try to make all those requirements for design and livability for multifamily housing, put them up front, make them extremely clear for all the parties involved. Um, the state said, if your standards aren't clear and measurable, and you don't put them up front, they don't apply. Um, and there have been cases up and down the state where applicants are kinda taking cities to court by saying, hey, this, this specific regulation was pretty unclear, and yet I was expected to abide by it when I was trying to provide affordable housing. So that, that's the gist of the third ordinance, which also implements a couple of housing element programs. Um, the other thing I'll say about this ordinance is that we did our best to, um, to illustrate these standards. And zoning ordinances are not known for being super user-friendly or graphic or, or easy to use. Um, we tried to, um, illustrate what we meant in our, in our design standards as much as possible, just to establish those expectations again, and hopefully make them more clear for everybody. Uh, last on our list, um, Senate Bill Nine, um, it's an implementing ordinance. Senate Bill Nine, um, is a piece of legislature that was adopted in twenty twenty-one, and it created a new process for homeowners to develop duplexes on existing single-family lots or subdivide an existing single-family lot. So it works similarly, if you're familiar with accessory dwelling units or granny units or in-law units. It, it aspires to create a new, like, path for homeowners, property owners, to create new development on their property, hopefully, um, so that you can have intergenerational living, people, um, who can't, you know, afford their own home maybe, but can afford a small studio unit, rent one, um, or a duplex, um, on a property. So this bill was adopted in twenty twenty-one, and this is the follow-up. We've stayed very, very close to what the state has prescribed for this. It is a pretty controversial bill, and not every, it's not a popular in every single city. It may not feel right for, for every single city. So we've tried to stay, stick very clear to what the state requires in this area. Um, our hope is that with the standards we've written, that, um, property owners that do take up this new path can, um, create duplexes that fit into the character of their existing neighborhoods, and hopefully act as a new tool for wealth investment. Um, I would like to offer that, um, duplexes that are, um, developed under SB nine, one of the two units must be occupied by the owner. So there are kind of those measures built in to prevent, um, displacement, to prevent gentrification, to prevent, um, you know, outside house flippers from coming in, and just totally changing, um, you know, the makeup of your, of your neighborhoods. Um, so that was the four ordinances. Sorry if it was a little fast. Um, for the environmental analysis, um, we wrote an addendum to the city's general plan EIR. And so the addendum basically builds off of the environmental analysis that has already been, um, tried, tested, evidenced in your other documents. And we do not, um, propose any substantial changes in growth or housing that wasn't already accounted for by your general plan or your housing element. So we're, we're staying consistent to those, those things. Again, Planning Commission reviewed and voted in favor of these items. And that is our recommendation for you as well, um, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So much to the chair?
Yes.
You know, one of our, our, uh, I think most discussed item in years, uh, is our housing element, our housing, um, requirements, RENA numbers, a very fancy name that some don't like up here. However, um, we realize, um, we still have a long ways to go. I think, um, Senate Bill Nine and Ten was speaking to, uh, allowable's that we, as a community, had some concerns about, and that was, you know, pretty much, uh, coming in and doing however they want, whatever they want. And, uh, who's overseeing whether or not the owner lives, occupies that unit, et cetera, et cetera. So there was those, those kinds of concerns. And then, of course, local control. We wanted to be able to, uh, at the end of the day, have more say. But, um, I know this is something that we need to do. I, I believe it's an annual basis, if I'm, if I'm wrong, annually? Greg?
No, this is, uh, this is in response to the housing element, which is every eight years.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, just reflecting again on Senate Bill Nine and and some of the concerns that come to some of the community members have, it's it's a hot topic in in prior years and even still now. So I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in. I know it's something we need to do.
Through the chair.
Councilwoman Montero?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Actually, you know, I'm glad, you know, to see these ordinance because I think those was some of the, from the recommendation of the strategic planning that we did at the Memorial Center, talks about to prioritize to make sure that our zoning laws and land use is conformant with the state and with our local, own local authority over here. So I'm glad to see that it's coming to fruition because we need to change these these zoning laws to make sure that we abide with the with the general law and with the with the state mandate about housing. And also to deal about, you know, RENA numbers that have to do build affordable housing and low-income housing. And I know the housing element is very important for our city, you know, to be submitted to the state, so make sure that we are complying with this ordinance. So I'm glad to see that our city manager and Greg, planning department, and the consultants have presented this to the Planning Commission, and they have voted yes to adopt this. So I'm glad to see because we needed to update these zoning laws because we had these ordinance in our books from nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty, that it would have not been updated. So thank you for this. So I think we need to move forward with this one.
Yeah. Mayor, I just want to share something with you, and I don't know if you remember, but back in two thousand and nine, we were new to the city council, and there were some recommendations that I was making with regards to zoning overlays and changing the zoning on the Imperial Corridor and then working our way to do some changes on Crenshaw, Rosecrans, et cetera. But it was one of those things where the community was not having it. And the reason for changing the overload zone in two thousand and nine, back then, just think about it, I was wanting to include work-live, mixed-use, all of these things that in two thousand and nine, and folks weren't having it. And I know we're falling short in on housing, right? Now we are two, twenty twenty-three. I don't want to say I told you so, but.
To the chair, actually, to just comment what Ms. English just said.
Yeah.
I remember being sitting on the other side, two thousand and nine, when I was trying to buy the the low-income building. Before I bought the low-income building, I brought the idea about building small homes on the back of the of these lots that have a single-family home to house seniors and veterans or even a family member. That time, somebody told, no, we don't want these type of dog houses in our lot. They call them dog houses in our lot. But that was to to make sure that the family would, you know, because there was a lot of senior population that needed a house. And and there was no space, especially to senior living, it was awful. And there was like a need for senior housing. And that was an idea to make sure that maybe we can build on the back of the house, like the EDUs are doing nowadays, right? But somebody said it was dog houses, we didn't want those in our neighborhoods. So and it goes whole, whole circle around, right?
Whole circle.
So, and, you know, these ordinance also is going to give us an ability, you know, to develop, like, say, the Crenshaw Corridor or the Inglewood, or, you know, to build more dwellings that it's, you know, mixed-use, you know, that is going to be bringing commercial and housing together. Because if you look at it, what's happening in Cava City, in Gardena, in Carson, they're building these mixed-use overlays project that we need to be doing those in our in our corridor to bring consumer to our cities so we can make this city, like Ms. Valentine used to say, a destination so people stop dining and 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 live here.
It's a lot of work. I I know Greg worked hard. And then, Mayor, there was a visit that we made to New York, and we talked about, you know, the Bronx, Queens. We talked about their housing programs, projects, whatnot. And I'm looking up twenty, twenty, twenty stories high, right?
Holland.
Twenty stories high. I'm like, we don't have space, if you will, that goes across, you know? We have to think up now. And I know it's like everybody's cringing and saying, no! But density is is not a favorite word, however, because our community, our city, is growing. There's a lot of things that we need to look at. And, you know, there was something earlier about having to build housing in our commercial area now, talking about, you know, I didn't get an opportunity to see the zoning map, and I, I, I.
Overlay.
Yeah, okay, so if if we're talking about more, we have to go into those areas. It's it's going to be something that we need to really take a look at.
All right. That's item fourteen through seventeen. I'll reserve my comments for a later time. But be a good sport and just introduce these.
Yes. Go.
Go ahead.
Ordinance number two-two-four-zero, first reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending chapters seventeen dot zero-four, seventeen dot fourteen, seventeen dot sixteen, seventeen dot eighteen, seventeen dot nineteen, seventeen dot twenty-two, seventeen dot twenty-nine, seventeen dot eighty-seven, to be in compliance with the housing element, and establishing new chapters, seventeen point eight-five, housing overlay, and seventeen dot one zero-one, standards for specific uses and compliance with the housing element. For introduction.
I move to introduce. Item fifteen, please.
Mr. Mayor, can you hold one second? Because it was a public hearing, and you didn't ask for the.
Did I? Is that, is that true?
If it's anybody else.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there anybody wishing to address the city council on anything that was said or anything that's on the agenda for item fourteen through seventeen? If not, the public hearing aspect or communication of the public hearing aspect of is close-ordered.
Thank you.
I move, I move to introduce ordinance number twenty twenty, twenty-two forty. The next one, please, fifteen.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing and introduction of ordinance.
What happened?
I've been told that that the introduction will remove section eleven from the ordinance.
Section eleven?
Yeah, that's, that would be section eleven on the ordinance, starts with section seven point two-nine point zero-four-zero, development standard.
Wait, just as a, hold on.
On the fourteen.
On item number fourteen, for introduction.
Why, it wasn't just done before? What happened?
Right here. Two-two four, amending title seventeen.
That's being requested by the the planning department.
We discovered an error today. The entire section that was to be amended wasn't included by mistake, and so we're going to extract or, yeah, remove that from this ordinance, and I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission as a new ordinance.
Okay.
So then we'll just, I'll remove my introduction for this item in its entirety. Is there anybody in objection?
You can remove, I'm sorry, you could introduce.
How about we just do the complete thing?
Well.
I don't.
It's not going to slow down anything.
If I may, this only affects the CM zone, and the rest of the ordinance has the overlays, and it has other things that people are actually, you know, relying on already to get passed. So my recommendation would be just take section eleven out.
Yep.
Okay. We'll take the section out.
I'll move to introduce as amended. Are there any objections to that amended introduction?
No.
It's just an introduction, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
We have, I mean, it was already introduced, so we have to reintroduce.
Yeah.
Item fifteen, ma'am.
Thank you, Greg.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing and introduction, introduction of ordinance number two-two-four-one, to amend the city zoning map to implement the housing overlay and other policies of the two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-nine housing element. No communications were received.
Anyone wishing to address this specific topic? If not, I'll declare oral communications on this ordinance close-ordered. Can you read it? Twenty-two forty-one?
Ordinance number two-two-four-one, first reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending the city zoning map to implement the new housing overlay and other policies of the two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-nine housing element. For introduction.
I move to introduce. And can you introduce, can you discuss item sixteen, please?
Item sixteen, now is the time and place for a public hearing and introduction of the ordinance number two-two-four-two, establishing chapter seventeen dot one zero-zero of the Hawthorne Municipal Code regarding multifamily and mixed-use objective design standards. No communications were received.
Anybody wishing to address this item, twenty-two forty-two? If not, oral communications on this item is close-ordered. Can you please read ordinance twenty twenty, twenty-two forty-two?
Ordinance number two-two-four-two, first reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing a new chapter seventeen dot one zero-zero, multifamily and mixed-use objective design standards of Title Seventeen, zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code. For introduction.
I'll introduce.
Okay. Madam Clerk, item seventeen, please.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing and introduction of ordinance number two-two-four-three, establishing new chapters sixteen dot six-four and seventeen dot one zero-two, related to two-unit residential developments and urban lot splits. No communications were received.
Is there anyone wishing to address, discuss twenty-two forty-three? If not, I'll declare oral communications on that item close-ordered. Can you please read it?
Ordinance number two-two-four-three, first reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing a new chapter sixteen dot six-four, urban lot splits, of Title Sixteen, and establishing a new chapter seventeen dot one zero-two, two-unit residential development and urban lot splits, of Title Seventeen, for introduction.
I'll move to introduce. Can you please discuss item eighteen, ma'am?
Now is the time and place for a public hearing on the draft two thousand twenty-three pathways to removing obstacles grant application pro-housing grant. Recommended motion, the staff recommends that the city council conduct the public hearing and receive comments on the draft two thousand twenty-three pathways to removing obstacles grant application. Approve the draft two thousand twenty-three pathways to removing obstacles grant application. Authorize the city manager or their designee to submit the draft two thousand twenty-three pathways to removing obstacles grant application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. No communications were received.
Is there anybody who wishes to address this item? If not, I'll declaring the hearing so close, close-ordered. I move to approve the draft twenty twenty-three pathways to removing obstacles grant application.
Check it.
Please vote. It's actually a voting item. Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
We have an ordinance, please.
Item nineteen, ordinance number two-two-four-five, first reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending sections five dot nine-two dot one-two-zero, is existing non-conforming uses of Title Five, Business Regulation and Licensing, and using the common sense exemption pursuant to CEQA, CEQA, for introduction.
I introduce.
Okay. City manager's consent calendar, please.
Item twenty, letter of support of the Metro Sea Line Green Extension from the Redondo Beach Marine Station to the New Torrance Transit Center via Hawthorne Boulevard, elevated option. Item twenty-one, approval of the amended agreement with South Bay Workforce Investment Board to provide business assistance services under the City of Hawthorne's Business Assistance Grant Program. Item twenty-two, agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Harrison Associates for various affordable housing consulting services. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items twenty through twenty-two?
Through the chair, please. Thank you, Mayor.
Through the chair. Yes, sir.
Also, I'd like to discuss item twenty.
Twenty.
Okay. I make a motion on item twenty-two.
Second.
Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you for pulling that item. Councilmember Patterson, because I have intense questions on this, too. Go ahead.
Mr. City Manager, I, looking at the agenda bill, it was saying that.
Which item is this, sir?
This is item number twenty, I'm sorry, for the letter of support for Metro Sea Line. And I understand there are three options for, I guess, how they're going to extend that that line. The three options being through the metro right-of-way, elevated at Grand Alignment, the trench option, and the Hawthorne Boulevard option. And it's recommended that we support the Hawthorne Boulevard option. I just wonder if somebody can speak to why that option was recommended over the other
Yes.
Oh, by the way, I I received a letter from a council member in Redondo Beach that asked for us to support this, so I need to know what the other two options are as well.
We need a letter of support.
Yeah, but we were.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmember and mayor for them. The other option, they were trying to use Prairie Avenue to put the transit in the middle of Prairie Avenue. We have several meeting with MTA with Cartran because they wanted to connect the green land to the K land transit and basically to save it for City of Hawthorne. The other option, using Hawthorne Boulevard to do in the tunnel, because of a lot of utility was involving trenching and cost-effective because of that, as the City of Hawthorne, we have option and we supporting the benefit Hawthorne Boulevard because it's going, affecting Hawthorne less. And if, because this is going to be affecting the green land from Marine Avenue to the SOT. It's not going affecting Hawthorne that far because existing green land is there.
And I just want to make sure I'm clear on your explanation. The one option would put rail down Prairie, which would have a big impact in the City of Hawthorne.
Yes.
Other option would be underground trench, which would be cost prohibitive because of utilities.
Exactly, yes.
And the third option would have the least amount of impact on the City of Hawthorne.
Right, because it's not affecting Hawthorne that much because we using the existing green land along from Marine Avenue to Hawthorne Boulevard.
Thank you so much for the explanation.
Well, okay, help me understand this. I don't have the diagram. It's not, that wasn't included, whatever. But so the, it ends, the current green line ends over here on Marine, right?
Yes.
Kind of near Costco or a little further down?
Yeah, green line is going to go to Marine Avenue, going to El Segundo, you know, Douglas Street. And from there go to Imperial Highway coming back to.
But the Marine, the the Marine, where it stops over here, Marine, how is it going to continue down towards Torrance?
It's going to use existing railroad, Union Pacific, Santa Fe Railroad right of there.
Okay, got it, got it.
Yes, the problem.
Yeah, yeah, I could see that. And then, at what point does it veer off of the railroad track?
Yes.
Once it hits Hawthorne?
After past one hundred and ninety street, on Hawthorne Boulevard, one hundred and ninety.
So it's going to go down, so then, once it, once the, once it follows the train track leading all the way to Hawthorne Boulevard, it turns down Hawthorne Boulevard?
Yeah, if you follow Union Pacific, Santa Fe Railroad right of there, it's continued from Marine go to London along Inglewood Avenue. And go, when you cross to Marine Avenue, when get to Hawthorne Boulevard, from one ninety go to one, crossing one ninety and Hawthorne Boulevard, it's go there.
But that's not one ninety, though.
It's south of us.
Yeah, one ninety.
It's all south of us.
If you're going go SOT, it's going to go to one, crossing one ninety.
Like the Galleria.
Yes. Exactly.
Remember the Galleria? Yeah, it's going that way.
I know, but one ninetyth, what's it, what's?
No, it's not, it's going before one ninety, north of one ninety on Hawthorne Boulevard, it's crossing.
The right-of-way that goes down, that kind of follows the pathway of the four oh five continues past Hawthorne Boulevard. So at some point, it's going to turn southwards, right?
Because.
Once it hits Hawthorne Boulevard, that's what I'm saying.
South, yeah.
And then it will go overhead along Hawthorne Boulevard till it hits one ninetyth.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I needed to know.
To the chair.
Thank you.
I I made the the initiative to talk with engineering here in our City of Hawthorne in advance of even bringing the item to council a couple of weeks ago in support. And the reason I I favored this was for the for the simple fact of the descriptions that were just provided to us by Public Works Director Akbar. The the Prairie Avenue was totally unacceptable, right? Unacceptable. It's going to affect Hawthorne the most, the most. And then the Hawthorne Boulevard above, you know, they wanted to do it below grade, well, obviously. And then the Hawthorne Boulevard above gr- uh, you know, they wanted to do it below grade, well, obviously below grade. Um, a lot of tunneling, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, utilities, et cetera. So the least, the least impactful for our residents, for our city, would be the area in which they already have a running line, the green line, and all they're gonna do is just extend it to include to Torrance, right? And it's more, um, feasible, I think, when you have existing rail. You have railroad, and then you have tracks, so, um, that was the only reason I would bring it. If, trust me, if there was anything that I felt that was gonna be hurting us, um, I would never support it. But thank you to the council, because we did, and we forwarded a letter of approval. But thank you, Mayor, for your leadership. I know you're concerned, too, about the effects of Hawthorne that that could have had. But we, we, we all felt the same.
I guess I'll be voting for this now.
We're all looking out for it.
I move. Second. Please vote.
Thank you, Akbar.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Uh, we all remember when the Prairie option came up, and I was like, what the heck are you guys talking about? You guys crazy? It doesn't even make sense. It's the Hawthorne Boulevard corridor that's the economic corridor. Uh, man, at some point, we, uh, you know, it, it comfortably went around Hawthorne through El Segundo, so now I guess it's time to continue it southwards.
It's Longdale that's gonna have to deal with, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah, Longdale was...
All the burial sites and things that they're having to, you know...
They're finding burial sites?
Yeah, yeah. Item twenty-one?
You remember the, the cock, you know?
Oh, go ahead. Item twenty-one, discussion.
Thank you. Um, the reason I pulled item number twenty-one is because I want additional information. Um, most importantly, I haven't heard a report back from its initial initiation, in which we had a, uh, contract with. So I wanna see what they've done thus far. So if there's any way we could bring, um, the South Bay Work Enforcement Board back. Um, there's a concern I have, um, with regards to the extension and the amount that it's gonna cost us. It literally went from, uh, fifty, can't say it, fifty, 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 I wanna say fifty-six, fifty-three thousand?
I can explain that. Mister Ken Duran presented at the last meeting, and it was council's direction to extend the deadline for additional applications. At this time, we received thirty-five applications, which we're looking to, uh, delegate five thousand dollars to each business. This is the reason for the extension of the cost of the, the contract.
Of it going to a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred?
Yes.
That's not for the contractual service of South Bay offering services?
Uh, not to my knowledge. This, this money was being shifted around to fulfill those thirty-five new applications.
So it's actual money to, for the program to offer?
That's not how, that's not how, that's not how I read it. It, it, it's a contract. It's a binding contract. It's a contract that will provide services under the City of Hawthorne's local business assistance program. So in other words, it's South Bay, it's the South Bay, um, that's assisting, right?
Yes, they're assisting HDL.
So they're the ones that are asking for a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred?
Yes, 'cause they're actually gonna help actually fund the, the project to the businesses in the City of Hawthorne. So the money that we're paying to the South Bay Work Enforcement will be, uh, distributed through the South Bay Web. And the monies that we're paying, we're taking from other programs that weren't as successful as this program to fund this program here.
So you mentioned you had thirty-five applicants?
Yes.
Currently? Here it's saying that they have up to twenty-five.
Um, under discussion, second paragraph.
Yeah.
Uh, it says, this brings the total grant applications to thirty-five.
Okay. I'm looking at the actually scope of work and responsibilities of the contract. I just wanted to know what they've done thus far, because didn't they...
What we can do, per your direction, we can bring, uh, a representative from the South Bay Workforce Board to actually present on this topic, uh, during the next meeting.
Yeah, no, that would be great. I, I would like to hold off, if we can, until that time. It's ac- it's asking for the total compensation of the agreement, of the agreement, to increase from a total of fifty-three thousand to a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred. And it talks about the scope of work. I have yet to hear what they've done with the fifty-three thousand. So if we could hold off until they could come back and give us an explanation, that would be great.
Through the chair.
But, uh, this is not a, one, if, if we hold on, not voting on this, it's not gonna be putting those, all those business on hold that are waiting for this money to go help them improve something?
Yes, they would.
They would? Because, because I remember when Mister Duran came and present, and because the South Bay Web have helped them connect to some of the businesses, they were having, uh, difficult of reaching out, and then we said we wanted to increase the amount of money to, to help more business, uh, because this money come from the HAPA money, right, from the federal government?
Yes, and it's within the budget. Uh, what happened with other programs, as I mentioned, wasn't successful. We just, uh...
Redirect the money.
Direct the money to this account here.
Because I remember we gave a directive to put more money into the business, uh, to help the business.
If I, if I can add to the conversation?
Yeah.
The last, uh, page of that amended contract, if we take a look at it, it has the cost breakdown. And it says administrative costs, which I assume this is what they're gonna pocket at seventy-five hundred.
Yeah.
And the in-business services is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so I think, if, which is five thousand per business. So this is, that money's gonna be spent on the businesses at a rate of five thousand per business. Does that, do I understand that accurately? So that's not necessarily to their pocket.
Seventy-five hundred is to manage the program. They need to pay somebody to...
Can you bring them back? Can you ask them to come back and tell us what they've done thus far? What they're doing?
Um, well, as of now, they haven't done anything. We're waiting for approval to be able to actually...
No, they have done something. What did we give the fifty-three thousand for?
Well, they made contact with the businesses for the thirty-five applications.
I wanna know how they did that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I would still make a motion to go ahead, because I don't want those business to be waiting, because they have applied, right? They have submitted application, right? And then if we don't prove it, they're gonna be waiting, uh, for the service, right? So I would make a motion to go ahead and approve.
A second. Okay.
And then just ask them to come and present. But I would say go ahead for not to stop those.
Please vote.
Thank you.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Thank you. City Attorney's Consent Calendar.
Item twenty-three, deny claim of Daniel Ramirez. Item twenty-four, deny application for leave to pre- to present late claim of Greg, Gregory Tomich. Mister Mayor, that concludes the City Attorney's Consent Calendar. May I have a motion to approve items twenty-three and twenty-four?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Vote, please.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting, yes.
Okay. Discussion action item twenty-five.
Oh, well, I think we have to vote on twenty-four as well.
Pardon me? What about?
Twenty-four.
We voted on it.
Did already.
We did both at the same time?
Yeah.
You did include it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, twenty-three, twenty.
It's just getting a little bit late, that's all. All right. All right, discussion item, Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, the reason that I brought this discussion item is for us to think about even maybe to create some type of an emergency ordinance, because it's my understanding that our City of Hawthorne, our business have sometime to do a lot with the commissions, like the Service Services Commission, the Planning Commission, and especially, you know, like, for example, the Service Services Commission have not had a corn, and there is some potential jobs position that they have to approve, and they have not been able to approve those, okay? The same thing as the Planning Commission that have a tremendous impact in our city of projects coming into Planning Commission, and they have not have a corn. So I want us to talk about, to discuss how we can amend the ordinance that we did about few months ago to get rid of all the, uh, the commission that has been turned out without having a full commission. So I want to make sure that we should have at least five commission on board before we can dismiss anyone, because then we going to hurt ourselves instead of conduct business on a normalcy in our city. Like I said, special, the Service Services Commission, that is very important to, to our staff, um, for evaluations, to hiring staff, and also the Planning Commission, that is vital for our economic development. So I'll open for discussion.
Through the chair. Uh, yeah, I support your recommendation.
Through the chair. I support it, too.
Okay, there's, there's a consensus. I'll, I'll adhere to acquiesce to the majority. You like that word, Mister City Attorney? Is that appropriate use of the word?
Uh, Mister Mayor?
Acquiesce, yeah.
So I would recommend to us, Mister Kim, Mr. Tony, to bring some, you know, your knowledge, expertise of how we're gonna do this on a expedite.
Got it. I've been, City Attorney has been directed.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. Elected officials reports, uh, our city treasurer sends her regards. She's not able to be here, right? City Clerk, now it's your turn.
Want to thank everybody for coming out. Wanted to thank everyone who came out to the private suites tour. It was really a lot of fun having everybody there, uh, to see such a beautiful place right in our backyard. Also, the Hispanic Heritage Month event was fabulous. It was fun to watch everybody out dancing and having a good time. The little girl singing was just fabulous. I have so much video of her. Um, wanted to also thank our city manager for leadership training at SOFI. It was a great day of just kind of talking amongst ourselves about how we can always get better and improve. And, uh, that is pretty much it for me.
I know you're videotaping out there, man. If something shows up on social media...
Oh, I have Angie, I have Angie, I have Angie dancing a lot.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, thanks for being there. Councilmember Ronnie, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so sorry I was unable to attend that event. Sound like it was a lot of fun. Um, sadly, had to, well, not sadly, but I had to work, so, um, I, um, planning to be there next year. So, um, I wanted to say thank you also to our city manager for the SOFI, um, experience. We had an opportunity to tour that, and I have to say I'm definitely floating, um, off of that experience, because I see, um, that made me think about what we're gonna be doing, um, in our city, and the things that we have planned, and also our new, uh, city hall that does in the works. So there's so many things that is to come, and just being in there, um, experiencing that, it's like, okay, this is what you guys do, but we gonna do some stuff, too. So get ready, um, get your popcorn, 'cause we gonna be celebrating in, in the City of Hawthorne as well. Um, I had an opportunity to, um, attend the, um, annual, for forty-first Annual President's Council Holiday Fundraiser. Um, that was hosted by my fellow councilmember Montero. And, um, I appreciate, you know, this event being a fir- forty-first event, but also, um, we're in trying time, so anything that we can do to help each other as it regards to food and holidays is always, um, a blessing to be able to help each other. Uh, we are the City of Good Neighbors, so this is more, this is definitely fitting. I also attended the airport traffic, um, meeting, and some very interesting points were brought up that I wasn't aware of. And one of the things, um, that I want to have a discussion about, uh, city manager, that maybe we could talk about, they talked about that our airport is closed at ten PM. And what it made me think about is our airport is not being monitored from ten PM to six AM, and that anybody could fly into our airport. And it just made me think about nine eleven, where, you know, folks had an opportunity to do some things. So I don't know, um, how we can address that, but definitely having security during those hours, um, of operation is definitely a concern that we don't have, uh, security during that time. So I definitely would like for, uh, to have some kind of discussion on how we can deal with being monitored during the hours of ten PM to six AM. Also, um, I had an opportunity to attend the groundbreaking ceremony of the, uh, Hawthorne High School Athletic Field. Um, if you guys have not been there, that place is amazing. I mean, the, I didn't realize how big the, the athletic field, but the campus in itself is just gorgeous. Um, and then they have an engineer, uh, component there. I mean, it's just a beautiful camp- uh, campus, and what they have in store, it's gonna be, uh, completed in twenty twenty-five, but if you have a chance to go by and see what's gonna happen there, um, it's amazing. And also, um, losing, or I think they're gonna be having their ripping, cutting on theirs, um, is it November the second?
I think it's on the second, yeah.
Yeah, November the second, so if you have an opportunity, uh, make sure you attend the ripping, cutting of that. And then also, um, I'd like to say thank you so much to, um, Senator Bradford for stopping by and, uh, sharing those updates on the bills that, um, he passed. And again, like my colleague said, he is always here for us. Um, he is definitely always in the community. And so I appreciate the work that he continue to do, um, in our city. And then I also want to say thank you to, um, Jeff Pring for coming by, our assessor, and talking about that seven thousand dollar, um, credit for homeowners. So whatever you do, make sure you take the time to apply for that, because that's huge. Uh, with everything going on and inflation like it is, to be able to do, all you have to do is apply to get a seven thousand dollar, um, credit. That's huge. So make sure you do that, um, apply for that through the assessor's office. And then the last thing that I wanted to touch on, um, the presentations that were here today from, uh, Sanctuary of Hope, I appreciate them, um, and the work that they're doing, and the story that the young lady talked about being homeless. And so one of the things, um, they mentioned is the voucher. And city manager like to give a, a directive as to see how we can increase our voucher rate, um, immediately, um, to provide to our homeless. I know that they talk, she, um, mentioned that the surrounding cities have gotten an increase in their rates, and I actually have, uh, copy of the rates that have increased. So I would love for our city to be aligned with the other cities, or at least align with the current rates of today, um, in terms of the voucher. And also the, um, carpenters, uh, presentation as regards to the apprentice program. Please, please, please make sure, if that is something of interest, please go and apply. It's a great program, um, gives you health benefits, um, good paying wages. And, you know, if you're not in construction, that's not the only positions they have. You could be a rep, you could work in the office, you could be a secretary. They have multiple positions if you're not just interested in just being, you know, doing construction. You could be a, you know, a secretary, a rep, or any of the administrative positions as well, and they make good money. So, um, I am strongly encourage our youth to go out and apply, and most definitely, uh, homeless folks who, uh, need an opportunity to get back to work in our at-risk youth, and folks that are going in, uh, getting out of the re-entry space. So thank you. That's it for me.
Councilmember Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protim. I want to first thank the community for coming out, participating in this process, uh, making your voices heard, just staying up to date what's happening in your community. Uh, we definitely couldn't do it without, without your feedback. Want to thank city staff, uh, for working your long hours, making these meetings happen, and just for your work in the community, um, and for the residents. Of course, want to thank our police department for your hard work as well. Um, I had a chance to look at a, kind of an update that our chief had provided us, uh, about some of the work that the police department's doing. And, uh, you know, our police department work, works really hard. Uh, they definitely respond to a lot and, and service, not just some of the challenges that happen in Hawthorne, where some of our, our neighboring cities utilize our, our, our police department for, you know, for a lot of things. So I just want to show, show my appreciation. Uh, I, I was involved in a few conversations over the weekend about, uh, law enforcement, and every time I hear about experiences in other cities, I, I tend... I tend to appreciate, you know, our police department so much more. So want to thank you guys again. I want to thank everybody if you came out and spoke today, starting with Senator Bradford, our county assessor Jeff Prang, the carpenters' union, and sharing the apprentice program, something that I'm glad that I was made aware of. I'm do whatever I can to kind of spread the word. I want to thank Sanctuary of Hope for coming out and telling their story. I'm definitely gonna reach out to you guys and see how I can be a resource to that organization. You know, one of the statistics when it comes to youth coming out of the foster care system, I believe 50% end up homeless. And it's just tough. And so I, I have a lot of appreciation for any organization that helps support that population. As we all know, if we invest in our youth, we don't have to invest in our prisons. So I want to thank them for their, their hard work as well. Mr. City Manager, the entrepreneur who runs the M&amp;M's on Imperial, has shared some things that were pretty troubling. I know this, the chief of police reached out to her, but definitely want to echo my concern for what she's going through and whatever we can do as a city to support that business. I want to definitely make sure that we do so. There was a gentleman, Mr. Rosen, who made some comments about some litigation. Mr. City Attorney, if you can provide a legal confidential about that, that litigation that, that he talked about. Friends of Hawthorne Library having a BOGO event. I'm gonna make sure I come out and spend some money. And I've got a few emails I just want to kind of share a little bit and make some requests. Mr. City Manager, a representative from a company, Enhanced Care Management, reached out to me. I'll forward you the email, but I believe they can help support the city in addressing those with housing insecurities in our city. So we can see how we can maybe, you know, work with them in whatever way that's appropriate. I would like to look into being a VITA community partner, which is the, the program that provides free income tax preparation for low-income individuals. And I'll forward you the information on that. But I want to see how we can support this program and offer this service to the community. I know Mayor Protim, Angie English, has always been an advocate for this type of resource and has helped bring some organizations into the city in the past. Want to make sure we, we continue in that vein. And I also received an email from SoCal Gas about a $5,000 grant for independent restaurants. And if there's anything we can do to share this information with the restaurants in our city, that'd be great, whatever way is appropriate. But that's all I have. Thank you, everybody for coming out. You guys hadn't seen me in a while. I was under the weather for a little bit, then I went out of town, went to the Cayman Islands for a few days. And I missed you guys, right? I hung out at the beach and thought about you guys. And I actually came back early because I miss you guys so much. And so I'm excited to be here and, and, you know, serve the community. Thanks.
Councilmember Montero.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Again, good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Let's just say, you know, thank you to all the presenters, you know, from Senator St. Bradford, to Jack Brandt, to the carpenters, to the Sanctuary of Hope, and also to the, our consultants about the zoning ordinance that was much needed. So thank you for all of that. I want to say thank you to our city manager and all the head departments because they've been doing outstanding jobs everywhere. And especially in those leadership training and retreat. And thank you again for that SoFi training. And also, you know, we did something also at the Hawthorne Airport in a recent few weeks ago. So thank you to keep the strategic planning alive because that's the way we're going to meet our goals in the, in the near future and in the, to the far future. But thank you for that. So it's, it's a good team that we have here. The city council worked with the staff, through our city manager and the city attorney and our chief of police, outstanding job. Everybody's doing fantastic. So thank you very much for that. Just to mention about the Hawthorne Airport, I learned recently that actually the Hawthorne Airport, you know, there is this notion that the, they should not, the plane should not be taking off after 10 o'clock, but that's a lie. Actually, I learned that Hawthorne Airport is 24 hours. After 10 o'clock, the airport traffic control is controlled by LAX Traffic Control. So any plane that lands after 10 and take off after 10 is direct by LAX traffic controllers. So not, not by our, because we have our own traffic control until 10:00 PM. But after that, LAX will take over. So that's what I was, you know, because in the past I thought, why these planes are taking off at 2:00 in the morning sometimes? I can hear them, they go zoom, over my house, right? So that's what we need to figure it out. But they said that airport is a 24-hour airport. I don't know who passed that law, but I think FAA did. So even with not us over here, so I don't know. So just FYI on that one. I want to say thank you to all of those who came to the Hawthorne President's Council Community Dinner because, you know, we raise money for holiday assistance programs, Thanksgiving's coming for food basket, and also Christmas that we give toys away to the kids. So actually, that night, we raised, you know, $5,000 plus. So thank you for all of those who came to eat and donate. I appreciate that very much. Especially, I want to thanks, you know, Dr. Crank, her daughter, Pastor Greg, and Mohammed to help me in the kitchen cooking the spaghetti. And also, I want to shout out to Rosalinda Martinez because she went out to buy the cakes, the salad. So, yeah, so thank you for helping on, on that day. I just wanted to let you know that the Sanitation District is celebrating 100 years, right? So they have an event coming up this Thursday at 9:00 AM in Carson to celebrate 100 years of the Sanitation District. So the, if you want to be there 9:00 AM in the morning at 24501 South Figueroa Street in Carson, 24501 South Figueroa Street in Carson, they're gonna have a celebration over there. And also, on last Monday, I stopped by the Al Camino College, you know, to look at some of the programs that going on over there. And I was happy to know after the 15 months of impasse, the faculty and the board reached an agreement for the, for contract for the faculty. So they were happy about that. And I met some young people from the art gallery over there in Al Camino. So they want to come, I think, on December meeting, first meeting in December, 10-minute presentation to give us a little bit of their project. You know, they have a chorale, they call it chorale. And they're gonna go to the Canary Hall. So they're trying to, I think, fundraising money. So they want to come and give us a little of their taste of it, okay? Music, like maybe Christmas carols. So, so then maybe we could help them go to Canary Hall, you know? So just keep that in mind. Again, I have to say, you know, keep people's education and your first home is the key to take you out of poverty, okay? Do not let nothing else. So make sure you take advantage of all the free education or the, or the scholarships program and all the first-time home buyer out there in LA County, in the states. Take advantage of that. Because what, I'm gonna give you a very simple story. In 2003, I bought my home for $200,000. And now, according to the assessor, it's, it's worth $815,000. So even your return in, in, in homeowners is more than the stock market combined. So just keep that in mind. So education and housing is the key for your success, okay? And I saw Ms. Balboa, Arminia Balboa, and our Dick Yuma, our Parks and Rec Commissioners. I know you guys were out there evaluating and, and score the houses with the best Halloween decorations. So thank you for doing that. So thank you very much for coming in and to do that every, many, many years. So thank you again for all the, and again, I want to say, my head go, oh! My head goes out to the staff because they've been working a lot of weekends. Mr. Mayor, I made a decision with my team, the Wolf Fest Committee, the Wolf Fest Committee, remember the, every year I do that Wolf Fest in September? So we decide, because since you want to do music series in the summer, right, in July, and Ms. Katrina Mann wants to do some music. So we decide there will be no more Wolf Fest in September. So we're going to concentrate, we're going to concentrate on Juneteenth. So we're gonna make Juneteenth bigger, right? Instead of, because you're gonna have music the whole month of July and maybe even August because all of you, you want to bring more, you want to do music series some. So I don't want to be doing another music festival if we're gonna have music all through the summer and then September, you know, just reinvent the wheel. To me, so then Juneteenth is in June. So we'll concentrate to make Juneteenth bigger. Because, for example, you know, we have surplus, we have a surplus of $12,000 because we raised thousands of dollars for that Wolf Fest and we pay all our bills and we still have $12,000 left. All money donated by business and individual, nothing from the general fund. So we're going to concentrate more on Juneteenth. I'm gonna make a Juneteenth bigger and I'm gonna bring the committee. I'm gonna bring some, maybe the city clerk. And all of you are invited to be part of that Juneteenth committee. And we probably is gonna move Juneteenth from Holly Park to the Memorial Park and make it bigger. Okay, so thank you and have a good night.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you. So there's a lot that was said here tonight. I'm gonna try not to be redundant, but really quickly, I just want to express our thanks to our senator that was here this evening, our Mr. Prank, our assessor, task assessor, LA County, for LA County, Janet Kelly, it's been a while since I'd seen her from Sanctuary of Hope. Some of the speakers tonight spoke on concerns with regards to homeless and homeless committing crime. I, I don't condone the crime and the things that are happening that are really, you know, disturbing, especially, you know, defecation, urination in public, public areas, more importantly, families exposed to that type of behavior. It was said that, that this council should be looking at policy to assist in efforts to help the police to do more to enforce this, this type of behavior. We know that we recently took up discussion here last week with regards to no bail. And there was concerns that I had addressed with regards to repeat offenders, with regards to property crime, with regards to business crime. Having to speak on the public safety of the residents of Hawthorne, the businesses, and those that are, are every day passing through or, or live here. And these are just concerns. And this person was absolutely correct when he talked about doing more in, in policy. And I know there's, there's hand in hand, you have to work with the mental health aspect of it, the behavioral health, and you have to work with police. But having said that, I want to see if we could have a discussion, city manager, chief of police, with myself on what that looks like. Tapping into the resources that we already have, such as telehealth and other services that we might have to see how we could address these types of concerns, especially businesses that are having to come up to their door and open their doors and they're having to walk over individuals that are in their, in their way, on their property, et cetera, things like this. These are, you know, concerns that are real. I know there are concerns that have been said time and time and time again. I'm not falling on deaf ears. I do hear the concerns. I've seen it myself. I've worked with homeless. I've actually have worked with social services to place individuals in, in shelters and have helped in, to find remedies. But I'd like to see how we could work a little bit more on that, city manager and, and chief. I know there's policy with regards to not sleeping on sidewalks, things like this. Policy that is something that we need to have legal advice on. Let me just also thank Councilmember Montero with regards to your 41st Annual President's Council fundraising. I want to give 500 vahn to, to the cause in helping with that from my stipend. I also like to thank our city manager for his leadership to all staff and department heads on their recent staff training and SoFi tour. I've taken a tour twice to SoFi. I've been in the, in the locker rooms and in the training rooms. And I did the security downstairs. And it's a lot of walking, it's a lot of sidewalk. And so you have to wear comfortable shoes when you do that. I look forward to attending the game in December with the Rams and the New Orleans Saints. I'm gonna be hosting again. I can't even remember, but this is my 17th annual Operation Gobble. Look forward to doing that. Look forward to working along with the Department of Public Works, the guys and assisting. I'm saying it now, all of you who are listening out there, Operation Gobble is a way of giving back to the community that are in need. If you're able to help supply turkeys and/or assistance to give families a well-rounded Thanksgiving meal this year, please contact me or our city manager. What else? Great discussion here tonight. Lots of things we had, we got done that needed to get done. Our city is growing. Housing is a very important issue in our city. One that's not gonna go away soon. I know that there's a requirement that we have to make over 1,700 units of housing available by 2027. And that's something that we're gonna have to work not harder, but smarter. And look forward to having that discussion with Mayor, what, what that might look like. But again, thank you all for being, being here tonight. Again, great closing out of our Hispanic Heritage Month, can't say enough. And look forward to your new endeavor on Juneteenth. And then the Jazz Festival or whatever that's gonna be that you and Councilmember Katrina are gonna be doing. I'm like. Yeah, so we have a lot, we have a lot on our plate. But, you know, I really look forward to building out city hall and seeing what that looks like. A new city hall, a new concept of civic center. So that's, that's all good. Businesses apply for the grants that are available with the, what is it, Edison? Is it Edison or is it Southern California Gas, the gas company? Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. It's been a long night. So we have a violator of our, of our protocol here to try to say all the things you need to say during your time. Councilmember Montero, you get a warning. But you could go ahead and give your additional items that you want. Yes. Of course, man, that is crazy. Okay, yes, of course, man, that's really awesome, Jesus. Okay, so I guess it's now my, now it's my turn. Thank you to all those that came to the Fiesta in the Park, Bail en el Parque. It was an event that honestly took, how long did it take us to plan it before? A day or two. We tried to make it as simple as possible, just to get people out there to dance, to enjoy themselves, to get some empanadas, some Mexican sweetbread, pan dulce, some beverages, some popcorn and just be there like as a family, neighbors, just dancing and just simply just networking and just having fun. I think simple is kind of the best sometimes. So the, the concert, the mini-concert series in the park that I've fashioned would probably consist of three or four similar types of events where people are out there with a band, able to dance and enjoy, and enjoy themselves. Pretty simple affair, nothing complicated, just getting people out to the park where a band's playing that, you know, we want to showcase different theme. Maybe one day it's gonna be a 70s disco theme band. Maybe one day it's going to be a. Maybe one day it's going to be a Selena tribute band. Maybe one day it's gonna be a classic rock band. Maybe one day it's gonna be a funk and soul band. But just a very simple affair so that people could come out, okay? And, oh, she's looking at me, but you should have seen Mayor Pro Tem, Angie Reyes English dancing, man. I have video of that. I'd be glad to share it, but I won't do that unless she, she was dancing all night, I was dancing too. We were hosting, she was hosting, gracious host. We gave, raffled things off, so it was a great event. Thank you to all the volunteers, police department, etc. And it was really fun hosting it with the Mayor Pro Tem. I really enjoyed this experience. So, thanks for joining us together, both of us together. So, the airport, so that's, the airport is always when I, when we get people up here saying, hey, the airport and they're turning. My parents have lived on 120th and York since I was born, you know, like, well, no, like '74, right? A few years after we moved from Inglewood Avenue to that location. Since '74, guys, my parents knew that there was airport there, they knew that there was planes there, nothing has changed, okay? That thing, planes have been taking off 24 hours a day. There has never been anything different. So, trying to change the rules of what's already been existing. People who moved to, under the flight path, around there, around there, know what's existed there to begin with. So, I don't think anybody should be surprised and pretending that, you know, things have changed. One thing that we have to remember is that the FAA governs this airport. We manage the airport and we have people who contract this, the Hawthorne Airport LLC. They have concessions to be able to operate and manage and run this airport. But, the FAA is ultimately the ones who are responsible for the traffic that goes in and out. If you moved into an airport, what do you expect? There might be more traffic. Okay, no, slow it down? No, it's not gonna, it doesn't work that way. You think, do you think all the residents that live around the LAX airport are gonna say, you know what? Reduce the flights because, you know, starting to get a little bit more noisy or something? No, it doesn't work that way, guys, okay? So, let's be realistic when it comes to that. The city of Hawthorne has no impact on what happens at the Hawthorne Airport. Bottom line, bottom line. If you have a problem, you want to take it, you gotta take it to Congresswoman Maxine Waters, who's our federal representative. Who's our, who is in charge of the FAA, which is the Federal Aviation Administration. Bottom line, nothing we can do to change that situation. FAA, talk to Congresswoman Maxine Waters, you know? We'll send you, we'll send you, refer you there. So, I just wanted just to underline that, we sympathize with you, you know? I don't know, I don't get woken up by anything by now. I mean, I'm like, that's just filtered out by now, but for my parents, neither, so. I'm sorry, I just dropped it a little bit harshly, but it's the truth, guys, so let's just be realistic about that. Imperial Highway, the hotel, it's very important. The thing is that it's not a secret, guys, it's not a secret. When you drive by there, you see the hotel and you know something's different. You see the guards at the entrance to the motel, to the former motel that's now been converted to homeless units. So, you know that something's changed. Everybody, the news has gone around the neighborhood that it's now housing homeless individuals, formerly unhoused homeless individuals. And now things have changed. So, I think people are on the alert and sometimes they might assume that people from that location are the ones that are perpetrating. If we have a, that's why I told the lady, do you have a police report? Or asked her, was asked, do you have a police report? Can we verify somebody from those locations, okay? Because if we have a track record of there being, that being a den of crime, just like you would have any motel where it's like prostitution, drug selling and problems for the community. If that's a source of crime for our neighborhood, we would have to, we would be able to address that with the county, which is the ones who are operating those types of hotels. And our city attorney is well aware, but we have to have a documented cases that we can talk, speak to this. It's okay to suspect that it's these people and some of the homeless from here, there, from that specific location. But we have to have like a track record so we could speak with authority, okay? We can't just assume. And it might very well be the case, right? Might very well be the case, but we need to have that. And so, that's kind of part of what I would like to ask our police chief, just make sure that you, could you, could you give us a brief memo as to anything? Well, I don't want to ask you to do anything that's, if it might be premature. But privately, can you share your thoughts with me on that, Chief? As opposed to just coming up with a memo, it might be too early, that hotel has been converted just recently. And, yeah, we can have more of an educated conversation on the topic, right? I know the city clerk lives a little bit around the corner there, like on Inglewood, and so she knows exactly where it's at, right? Down the street from Jack in the Box, like halfway across the street from Winchell's Donuts, right? Yeah. On that same token, folks, something that really just startled me, really made me very sad and just brought up to, brought this up to, you know, a different level for me, is when I went to Target this past week to just grab, I forgot what it was gonna be, some shaving cream or something. How shaving cream gonna make me sad, right, Von? Is that what you're thinking? The fact that I looked at every, almost every, every other aisle, things were behind glass cases, man. What the heck have we come to that we have to have everything behind glass cases? What is going wrong with society or judicial system, our LA County District Attorney's Office? Or whoever's responsible for putting us in that mess? I mean, why would that stuff need to be behind glass doors? And the reason I bring this up is because I do work in a correctional facility. I work at the Men's Central Jail. And the inmates there, you know who their favorite, oh, man, I have full respect for the gentleman, but they're always watching what's happening in the District Attorney's Office because it's, oh, this is good for us. This change is good for us. This is good news for us. Oh, man, yeah. So, you don't, if somebody shops, if you get burnt once, right? You're not, you know, you're not gonna, you know, you're not, you're not gonna touch the fire. I mean, sure, it's different with if you shoplift and you get like, you know, people are arguing that if you start arresting people, start the record, that there's a cycle of recidivism that starts where people keep going back in jail. They can't get out of coming back to jail because now they're caught up in the system. Okay, I understand that. But if we have youth that are getting away with this over and over and over and over and over because the limit on what's able to be prosecuted is so high, they're gonna keep doing the same things. And I told, I told the clerks there at the Target, hey, man, why are you guys doing this? Oh, it's because the district attorney, they threw it out, the district attorney and the courts don't prosecute people that we call the police department to come and arrest. So, their losses have been so high that, that all these aisles have been closed up with glass cases. You have to press a button and have somebody come in and open it up for you. That's a big problem. And I think our city council needs to take an active part as they take in a stand and addressing whoever's responsible, whether it's the courts or the district attorney, because this is kind of bullshit if you ask me. You know, COVID happened, guys, COVID is over. COVID people were out of work, desperation. Maybe you can sort of see people stealing because they need to sort of, they don't have more jobs, they don't have jobs and then they're trying to survive or something. Maybe that would be, I don't want to say acceptable, but that's the reasoning. But we're past that, like, what, a year or two? Our economy's back on track. And so, we're still kind of just giving people, we're not even like, there's no even slap on the hand. There is no slap on the hand even, okay? So, I think, Mr. City Attorney, who is ultimately responsible for this situation? Was, is it our state government? Is it our district attorney? Or is it the courts that have kind of just gone out of their mind or something? Or what can you tell me real quick about that?
Wow, that's a very difficult question to lay on the city attorney.
Them to come down on you or something?
Well, no, no, that's not it. I, I think there are a lot of factors involved in crime and the rate of crime is not just the prosecution alone. But there are social issues, there's racial issues, there's economic issues. So, there are very multiple layers of issues that causes crime. Can you blame it all on a directive from the district attorney that doesn't want to prosecute certain misdemeanor-level crime? That's not accurate for this city because we do not follow the misdemeanor directive from George Gascon. We have our own prosecution unit and we do enforce petty theft and things of that nature. Having said that, the zero-bail cash bail policies will have immediate impact on cities like this because there, it kind of hampers the police activity from having these, making immediate arrests for these kind of crimes.
I just, I would like to ask you if you could come up with some type of legal confidential that kind of summarizes where, what powers we have still as a city in our situation with our prosecutorial group? See if there's anything that we can do to push things through. And if you can incorporate the homeless issue there as a, in a appendix with regards to what are, what powers we have to be able to prosecute those individuals if they're violating something in this, what do you call it, decency? What do you call it, public? Yeah, public decency, violations, robbery, anything, okay? We just want to see what our powers are. We want to strengthen our, the ability of our police to be able to, whatever, when they arrest somebody, that there's actually teeth behind it. So, I know there's frustration, but the thing is if we have an active council that's all in on this, coming up with some decisions, I think we could enable you guys in some ways or other. I just didn't like going in there and have to buzz. I had to get like, what? I had to get shaving cream, I had to get toothpaste, and then I had to get, I think, laundry detergent. I had to buzz that thing three times, all because of these idiots that are getting away with stuff. I mean, do they have this over here in Manhattan Beach, Target? They probably have that over there too, these little glass cases.
Yeah, they do.
I'm sorry, guys, I just got a little frustrated with that and I just thought I'd bring it to my council colleagues, you know, attention. I mean, I don't, maybe that doesn't happen at fancier locations or something other than Target, but you know.
People still everywhere. They're still everywhere.
Oh, you want me to keep on going, Mayor Pro Tem? So, we're gonna close out the meeting in honor of, or in memory of Carson Mayor Lula Davis Holmes' grandson who passed away recently. So, let's just a moment of silence for him. Okay, we're going to adjourn the meeting at 9:03 PM.